Unrelated, a scooter down like first west. Like unrelated to scooter down like first west.
Something else you thought was supposed to pass right is left turn lights.
Okay, it is now four o'clock and I will call to order our regular Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Meeting on April sixteenth. President and Commissioners Walker, Clapper, Winfield, Hadeen, McCurdy, McGann, and myself, Hadler. We also have our County Clerk, Waitek, our Attorney Stocks, and Administrator Mallory Nassau, as well as our Associate Administrator, Quinn Hall. And I think we have Chief Markham on Zoom. Welcome, Chief. Our first, let's see, our first order of business is citizens to be heard. So I would open our citizens to be heard section. This is just citizens to be heard on our Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. So if you're here for anything else, that will come shortly. Anyone here to be heard on Thompson Springs? And anyone on Zoom, anyone on Zoom who's tuning in to make a comment on Thompson Springs? Okay, I'll move on to general reports. We have none. Our consent agenda, approval of meeting minutes from March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and our ratification of payment of bills are comprised of consent agenda and those bills operate now amount to. Does anyone have the bills called up? Okay, I'll bring it here. Yeah, I'm spinning on seven. Oh, here we go. Total bills amount of one thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. Total payroll amount of one thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents for total bills and payroll. The amount of three thousand two hundred nineteen dollars and seventeen cents. And that is the consent agenda. Yes, Kevin?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. All right. I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Walker, second from Commissioner Winfield. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, raise your hands, and then passes unanimously. Right now to our fire chiefs' reports. I'll turn it over to Chief Markham. Welcome.
Uh, thank you. Good afternoon. I'll begin with equipment. All apparatus is in good working order. I will be getting annual safety inspections for the fire trucks, which is required by the state. For our MOU with the state to go out on wildfires and other types of fires. The backup generator is due for service, but we'll be doing that in-house. As far as training goes, we had our regular trainings on March thirtieth and April thirteenth. And on March twenty-third, my new firefighter took his hazmat awareness and operations test at the Moab Valley Fire Department, and we should be getting results soon. So he's on a long road to get all the training he needs to be fully qualified, but he's doing great. Other, on April eleventh, we had a controlled burn out there in Thompson. The landowner was burning. I just went and did a little little education with him. And he was very cooperative and is doing a great job clearing his land out there. So that's appreciated. I did sign a will serve for the potential new gas station at Crescent Junction, just meaning that if they put it in and do all the requirements to make it right as far as fire goes, that we would respond to fires out there. I did pass all my requirements to renew my wildland red card for the season. So there's a bunch of stuff involved with that, but this will be my twenty-fourth year as a wildland firefighter. And then as far as the fuel, the vegetation stuff out in Thompson, we are experiencing a green up right now, but all of the tall grass from last year has dried out. So we do have quite a fuel load out there and in the desert north of Moab. So that's all we have.
Awesome. Thanks so much, Chief. How old were you eight years old when you started fighting wildfires?
Thank you, Evan. Yes, that was seven.
Excellent. All right. Thanks, Mark. And let's see, it looks like we don't have any other new or old business. So at this point, I will adjourn this regular Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District Meeting at four oh four P M. And I will open our regular Grand County Commission Meeting, April sixteenth at four oh four P M. All present are those who are present at the Thompson Springs Meeting. All rise for a pledge of allegiance. All right. I must say I was expecting more folks in here for public comment, which I will open. I will please raise your hand if you're here to make a comment, and I will call you forward. State your name, and I will give you three minutes to speak, and I'll start with gentleman in the back. You may come forward. Yeah.
My name is Dave Flosser. I live on five hundred West. Commissioner, you all probably know my name by now. You know, I've been persistent and patient in my communication supposed to King Creek project. But what you don't know is that I'm not opposed to development in general. In beautiful places like Moab, it's inevitable. I honestly wouldn't object to third twenty or thirty beautiful second homes in the floodplain for the ultra wealthy. I'd rather this didn't happen, but I could accept it as growth at a reasonable pace. What's difficult for me about this project is it's incredibly over the top scale. The developer wants to build close to six hundred units across one hundred and seventy-six acres in a stunningly beautiful and currently undeveloped area. I don't know any of the developers personally and hold no negative feelings toward any of them. They are just doing what developers do. They are simply going through the process of obtaining all the approvals and permits they need to build this project of theirs. They're working to meet all the quantifiables and objective requirements of the land use code. As well as those required at the state federal level. But what about the more subjective requirement in our land use code? One title, land suitability comes to mind. This paragraph describes the type of land where homes should not be built, essentially based on some common sense practices. To me, this description has read clearly applies to the property question. But the develops aren't held to these standards and have nothing to gain by addressing them. They only need to adhere to the objective requirements of the code. But these more subjective portions of the county code were included for a reason. They're intended to protect the interests of our community, and I proudly assert you all are the only representative of our county that has the authority to stand behind them to support them. From what I've gathered, no matter, no matter how you all vote on the C U P, this battle will continue. Both sides are passionate and will continue to fight what for what's important to them, as I will. Arguments can be made to both sides, and the outcome is totally unknown. But wouldn't it feel better to support the interests of the thousands of impassioned members of our community opposing this project? Rather than three developers who don't live here and want to push this through at the expense of our community? Yet for a moment, we could set aside the rules, regulations, legalities surrounding this project. Where would it leave us? Wouldn't the choice be obvious at this point?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, yeah. Hello, everybody. My name is Gavin Belfry. I live on Cliffview Drive, been a resident of Moab for about three going on four years. I actually just recently got married here. Would love to stay. It was actually in this building. It was great. I'll keep my stuff brief. I would like to comment on the C U P being considered for the King Creek development as well. So I am of the opinion that we don't know enough to make an informed decision at the moment. I strongly urge you all to vote to delay this vote pending more information, specifically a correctly drawn as built of where their fill is going to be currently as far as the floodplain development permit goes. It is currently drawn so that they could fill potentially into the river, which would violate. As far as I'm aware, the Army Corps of Engineers permitting and a lot of other things. Furthermore, I would like to second what the gentleman just came up here to say. This is about a very valuable resource to this community, National Park quality landscapes. Things that are not protected simply because there's just so much of it around here. It's a draw to our community. People come to recreate in Grand County specifically for the type of beauty that we see on King Creek. And I don't believe that it would be as much of a draw and it would not generate as much tourism if there is a tennis court, swimming pool, and condos sitting along that area. But independent of that, I do believe there is more information that needs to be given from the developer standpoint for the C U P to even be considered much less approved. And as the gentleman before said, there's a lot of arguments to be made, and I would urge you guys to take the time to let us make those arguments, let them make their arguments back. Because at this juncture, this is not only a conditional use permit, this is also the county's stamp of approval on this project. I mean, there are only certain so many opportunities for us to actually take a moment and consider it. So that's all I have to say, and I appreciate you all for giving me the time to speak. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers who is here to make public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm a lifelong Moab resident. I've been here forty-three years. And I'm against this project just because of the.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Would you state your name, please?
Janine Torres.
Thank you.
Just because of the effect to our dark skies, you know, just the environment. I don't know if this is a good idea to have a waste disposal down in that area. The road isn't very sound. And it's just, I just don't feel like it's a good fit for our community. And I think we need some kind of protection against things like this. And I don't know. It's been going on for a long time. I had a building built right in back of my yard. We changed the zoning for Randy Day, and he built this humongous building back there. So this has been going on for a long time where we, the locals aren't protected as they feel like. So anyway, I'm against this, and I felt that they table this and have more input. Just because of the whole way it's happened.
Thank you for your comments. Thanks. I'll go to Zoom now. If you're on Zoom and you're here to make comment, then please unmute or use the hand raising function. Oh, Emily, I see. I couldn't see that hand. Go ahead, Emily.
No problem. Let me figure out how to lower my hand now. All right. Hey, all. So I want to make some short comments demonstrating how under state law, our land use code and the general plan, this conditional use permit should be denied this evening. So under our land use code, section nine point ten point five E, conditional use permits are required to be consistent with both the land use code and the general plan. And even though we might generally see the general plan as just sort of there as an advisory piece, Utah law under seventeen twenty-seven A four oh five allows counties to adopt ordinances that mandate compliance with the general plan. Additionally, Utah State Code seventeen twenty-seven A four oh six reads, and I quote, "After the legislative body has adopted a general plan, no street, park, or other public way, ground, place, or space, no publicly owned building or structure, and critically, no public utility, whether publicly or privately owned, may be constructed or authorized until and unless it conforms with the current general plan." So our general plan should be considered binding in this case. A couple of notes about the parts of the general plan that apply. Section six covers land use code, and the first of the priorities outlined under section six says that the general plan sets the policy of promoting a well-designed, compact community by following smart growth principles. And this is called back to in many of the later sections. The framework for this is set up in six point two, in which creates these urban service areas and divides the county into three levels of service. Level one has municipal water and wastewater, and also has what we might think of as like orderly development with, you know, cul-de-sacs and grids and so on. Level two has municipal water and sewer, but might have more sort of randomized development. And level three, very specifically, has no municipal services and may be served by onsite water and sewer. And when the Grand County Commission chose not to extend the municipal water to this parcel, it was reinforcing, not just by location, that this parcel is located in that level three service within the general plan framework. Now, there are policies under six point two that are relevant here. Policy three, that to strengthen and direct development towards existing neighborhoods by permitting intensified land uses and infill development within the urban service area supported by level of service one. Not three. Policy five, consider future commercial and industrial service areas in level of service one, not three. And critically, and here's the kicker, policy eight, do, I quote, "Do not extend community water and/or sanitary sewer services outside the urban service area service level one, unless consistent with adopted urban growth strategy or for public safety reasons as determined by the Planning Commission and the County Commission." So that plan is not in place. This would not meet the the policies under that section. Just one more quick note, and then I just have a quick bullets of conclusion. Six point eight talks about expanding these urban service growth and what future growth could look like, and it governs it under section eight, infrastructure. And section eight repeatedly enforces the policy to extend infrastructure and services to the area in an orderly, logical, efficient, and cost-effective manner, consistent with this plan. And again, calling back to the smart growth principles, eight point one point two, water and eight point one point three wastewater also reaffirms this policy. So four bullets quickly on what this means. The county intentionally defines service level areas one, two, three in their framework for the general plan, which was adopted by ordinance in twenty twenty-two in order to support its intent of ensuring future development follow the strategic goals of the general plan regarding compact predictable development. Bullet two, they explicitly denied expansion of municipal water to this property, and thereby they chose to exclude this property from service level one. Large-scale development and investment in additional water and wastewater infrastructure is explicitly only intended for service level one. And so a conditional use permit for this development should be denied. It is out of compliance with the general plan, and that lack of compliance is based off of a requirement that cannot be mitigated through the actions of the developers. The developers cannot compel the Grand County Commission to embark in long-range planning in order to justify some future approval of this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Emily. I would go back to Zoom and ask if there's anyone else on Zoom who was here to make comment. Thea Furman, I see you've unmuted. Are you here to make a comment?
Yes, I am. My name is Thea Furman, and I am a resident of Salt Lake City, and I have been a longtime supporter of Moab, and I've run the races down there. I actually was married in Moab as well. I was married over at the base camp. Lodge along the Colorado River, and even just, I mean, for me, the concern is I love going to the desert. It's a great place for me to get away from the city. But when I go to the desert, I don't want to go to another large city. And I particularly have, I love spending time and not long in that King Creek area because it is out and it is away from the city, and it is pristine. I mean, even over the last, you know, ten fifteen years I've been coming there. You know, we've had to mark designated campgrounds along that road because we know that people don't have the ability to respect the nature that we're in. Even just last year, when I came down over Christmas, I had noticed all along the Harab Pass Road, which obviously King Creek Road uses, we had to put in barriers to keep people from trespassing onto this pristine property. So we've already done some of these, you know, things to keep people from ruining this landscape, but we're allowing developers to come in and and make make this very large sweeping. It was, I don't even know, I'm so flustered by it because when I drove down there, I was so mortified by the trees and the natural landscape and the fauna being destroyed down there without any impact. You know, I don't know to say what the impact studies were of that, but just from a personal impact study, it was not a personal impact study, but just from my personal impact, it was mortifying to me, and it's not a place that I want to return to to see all of that development. I'm also very concerned about the sewage treatment plant. I have friends in neighboring Wayne County, and when the Bull Creek flooded last year, it also, a couple of years ago in twenty twenty-one, it also, their sewage facility was overloaded and all of that water did not, was not able to stay in their leaching fields and ended up in Fremont River, which ultimately ended up in Lake Powell. That is hugely concerning to me as a citizen for clean water and things like that. I mean, it was devastating to see that and to think about all of that in our water sources. So I would be very hesitant to return to Moab if this is a type of a development that is going to be supported by the city. So thank you for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. I see. Is that Leanna Usher with the hand up?
Yeah. Okay. My name is Leanna. I've been living in Moab for almost three years, and I come from a big city. And it took me a second to really get acclimated to living in a small town, but now that I am used to it, I am in love with it. Some of the things that I really love about it are that I am so surrounded by nature that is so close to me, and it's so therapeutic that it has changed my life, changed my body. My body was going through a lot of injuries from repeated use from driving a lot in Atlanta where I'm from. And so those are things that really matter to me. And so with this development, I do want to go back to the sewage plant permit that y'all are, might be voting on today. I don't know if you've been able to read all the comments that have been sent into you. I would suggest that if you haven't, take the time to do that and maybe postpone this vote. And if you have been able to see all the comments, really consider our community. I know you're all in our community, so I know that you all have some sense of personal relation to this project, and I just, in terms of flooding, just like the last person said, I think a lot about the floodplain, and it continues to weigh on me, and I've seen flooding here in the High River last year since I've been here, and that isn't even that long. So that's a huge worry of mine besides a huge other list of other things that I am not loving about this development. But yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leanna. Yes, sir. I'll come back into the to the chambers. You may you may come forward. State your name.
My name is Stan Johnson. I'm a six-year resident of Moab. Is there anything else in particular you'd like to know or? No, no, go ahead. Just just make your comment. Okay. I have a background in transportation and civil engineering as well. Like the previous commenter, I have also lived in big cities. I spent eight years living in Las Vegas, in which I saw a great deal of development happen. Very, very fitting for that city. I have been here, like I said, for about six years. Of all the place I've lived, I have never felt a stronger sense of community than here in Moab. It was something that did not really dawn on me in any of my previous residences. This particular development at King Creek does not seem to have any particular care for the needs of this community. It seems to be predominantly about making money, which I'm not opposed to. I believe in the free market. However, the idea of building several hundred, potentially thousand units, I'm sure not saying anything that's been said before, but we already understand that there will be traffic impacts, and those traffic impacts will not be limited to Can Creek because it does spill out onto one ninety-one. I have seen from living here and in other tourist locations, how the traffic does impact the locals, not just the environment, but our actual quality of life and getting around, adding stress and driving, increasing the number of potential accidents, fatalities depending. There's also the idea that Can Creek itself, unless it were sufficiently developed, is a very narrow road. My wife is a runner, and she has run a number of races that have been hosted down at the parking lot at King Creek. On race days, that corridor is incredibly congested. There have been races where they have had to simply bus people there. I do not know whether this development will result in similar levels of congestion, but it's simply unsustainable. Not only for those who live here, but those who come to recreate here. It becomes very dangerous, especially with such a narrow corridor, small shoulders. There's also the idea of building, I believe it was up to seventy-two thousand square feet of retail. As it is, we have a small labor pool. This is nothing you don't know. And I just question where exactly are they going to draw their labor pool from? Further, I'm not certain whether they've considered what exactly they're going to be able to sell. If they do place high-end commercial retail outlets there, I'm not really sure whether the locals or even the tourists are likely to sell it. Perhaps it'll just be a financial flop that will be on them. There's also, we've already addressed the idea of water wastewater management, but it's not something that I'm sure that the city or county can sustain locally. Ultimately, my point is this is a multi-level concern. It does not seem to have received really any proper concern or care from the development, as much as I can tell. I'm fairly new to this. I'm getting a lot of secondhand information, so forgive me my ignorance. But it seems as though we here have a much more vested interest in not seeing this development than the developers have in seeing the development. For them, it's a bottom line. For us, it's our lives. It's what we do. It's our family. It's our sense of community. I personally really don't care if they make money. I would rather see us maintain our community. I'd rather see us maintain what we have than ensure that they make a good profit. It's not as though they do not have other options elsewhere. Having, like I said, having lived in Las Vegas, I've seen large commercial developments. Las Vegas is great for that because it has a wide open area. However, even in Las Vegas, they were beginning to pull water rights from other states, including Utah. They were looking into pulling water rights from as far east as the Colorado River. I don't know that's going to happen here, but I've seen what happens when you have large developments, and when you try to cram that style of development into here. It's like Cinderella. She just doesn't fit. Don't worry. So I just wanted to express that I am another one of Moab citizens who is concerned about the development, very much like to see it stop. I'm not opposed to any development at all. We've seen a number of hotels. I think it's great. You know, maybe it can provide jobs. But this just seems like one that is completely thoughtless on the part of the developer and needs serious reconsideration before it's ever allowed to go forward.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have to say. Thanks. Anyone else in the chambers who is here to make a comment? Yeah, Laurel.
He's bigger this time. He gets to face out right now. Hi, my name is Laurel Hagan. I just wanted to say a couple of things specifically about the vote today. And once again, Bjorn agrees with everything I'm saying, fully supports it. So look at this adorable face. How could you say no? That I know that you guys have received a lot of pretty technical information about, specifically about the wastewater treatment plant and about the development as a whole and its anticipated impacts, just even in the last few days. And then also, I know as a member of the public, I know that legally you guys don't have to and often can't post a lot of information about these votes until the Friday before the Tuesday of the vote. But as a member of the public with other responsibilities, going through some of the information that was specifically only released on Friday, and being able to give it a substantive response and substantive analysis is a huge challenge and really needs more time than a handful of days. And so, so for that reason, I would ask you for both the sake of everyone at the county and then for the public to give this the proper amount of consideration. Again, especially given the large amount of technical information, I would ask you to table the vote for now. And then the other reason is that there are some really major outstanding issues with this development in general that have yet to be resolved. And one of them in particular very much involves the county, and I'm talking about the zoning. That is an extremely unresolved issue that while it does, you know, any of the realistically possible zones from this place would still require the same process for a conditional use permit, but they would not allow the same type of. But they would not allow the same type of development. Um, and so again, there the anticipated impacts or the anticipated effects of the conditional use permit would be seriously different depending on which zone this actually is, which at this point is a very much unanswered question. Um, and it gets more unanswered, the more you look into it. And so for that reason, and then also there's the water rights issue, which I'm sure that most of you have read about, which is also very much an unknown at this point. Um, and the what ends up being the answer to either of those would have a huge impact on what this can even be, both for the wastewater treatment plant, which of course depends on water to operate. Um, and then also for the zoning issue. And then, of course, there's a whole other cluster of issues regarding the road, which we haven't even really started to look at yet. Um, and it goes through BLM land, it goes along the Colorado River, it goes along nature conservancy property. The rights of way are not settled. It would need to go through a full NIPA process. It needs to be raised about floodplain, um, who pays for it, a lot of issues like that. And my concern is that the developers have known, or at least we have strong reason to believe that they have known based on when they filed their paperwork and when they asked for certain documents. They have known that the zoning was uncertain for years. They have known that their water rights were questionable for years. We just know that from looking at their own, the publicly available water rights record. And yet they have continued to move on to stack up lower level permits like this one. And my concern is that either on purpose or by accident, what they're doing is building up a possible legal and maybe just an emotional argument. That they have then put so much money and so much time and the county has led them on so much potentially. Um, that they can't, the later permits that are much bigger, that that it's harder to say no. Um, because they say, well, we've we've put however many million dollars into this and you guys have been giving us all these other permits. Why would you pull this very last one out from underneath us? And so if we keep granting lower level permits and allowing them, and again, when they are very much informed of the major uncertainties regarding this development. To spend millions of dollars. We're allowing them to build up that case. And so again, that's another reason, um, not necessarily to say no to the conditional use permit. That's gets into much more technical issues and I'm not going to attempt to talk about here. But it's very much a reason to table it until information can be considered carefully and major uncertainties can be resolved.
Thank you. Um, anyone on Zoom who is here to make a comment? I'll do a last call on Zoom. See anybody? Do one more round in the chambers here? Anyone here who uh would make a comment? Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your comments, and I will close this first citizens to be heard period up. We have our second citizens to be heard. Uh, time and period at six o'clock, as most of you probably know. All right, um, we'll move on. I don't believe we have any presentations, department or agency reports today. So we'll move on to general reports and we'll start with the commission member disclosures. Uh, any members of the commission here today that uh need to disclose anything concerning any of our action items? Looks like not. So we'll move on to general commission reports and future considerations. Um, I'll start with Kevin.
Um, excuse me. Don't have a whole lot to report. Uh, one thing which I think I may have mentioned before, so pardon me, pardon me if I'm repeating myself, but um. As as you probably know, the Bears Years plan is out for public comment for, I think it's a long ninety day comment period, we're probably less than thirty days into that. Um, Grand County is a cooperating agency, which means, you know, our comments maybe get listened to a little bit more. At some point, the county is going to need to, you know, write a letter saying what our comments are and that'll be on the agenda. But before that, um, some commissioners, including me, were maybe going to go, you know, talk to BLM, just, you know. Eliminate some questions answered. And I I guess I'm just inviting all of you, if you have ish, you know, things you think we should or should not weigh in on the Bears Years plan. Cause you know, give me a call. Let let me know. My initial thought is that we should not try to submit comprehensive um. Comments because, you know, San Juan County will probably do that. And I think a lot of issues don't really affect Grand County that much. And instead, we should focus on the things that do affect people in Grand County, you know, which is which is largely recreation. A lot of people. Live in Grand County, but they spend a lot of time climbing, hiking, et cetera, within the monument and I and I think there are issues in the plan that. Are very relevant to that. So that was what, you know, I'm sort of proposing for Grand County, just kind of focus on that. Not weigh in on things like, you know, grazing or um target shooting, you know, there's there's a lot of other issues, so.
Great.
And eventually we'll have a letter that, you know, we can, I'll look at it debate, but there's, you know, in less formal context that are also happening. So I just wanted to make sure. All commissioners have an opportunity to participate in that.
Great. Kevin?
Uh, yeah, I um had a follow-up with the gentleman that presented at our last meeting, inviting us to the. Library regarding the Main Street traffic, um, but it sounds like Bill, Stephen were in attendance for that, so I'll let them speak to. That meeting, but um glad to see some momentum there. Uh, Cemetery District Board met. Things are going well. Uh. Watering is under effect and uh some new leading out at the Moab. Once so, uh, spring is in the air and operations are kind of full swing, so that's exciting times. The Canulean Care Center Health, Canulean Care S- Health District Special Service. Uh. That and we approved those bylaws that we had been reviewing and uh got updates on the facilities there. Uh, there's a broader, the larger scope of care facilities, there's some uh uh. Staffing challenges and so just trying to anticipate those and make moves and um. Uh, things are moving in a good direction over there, so feeling good with that and. I may double dip. I felt like there was something else I was going to report on that I'm spacing right now, so I'll pass it on for now.
Thanks, Evan. Just let me know if you need to uh augment your remarks. Uh, Bill?
Yeah, we had an in-house um Moab Valley Fire discussion. We started on to bring that subject back up. Let's see, that was just a few of us participated there. There was also a Moab Main Street meeting, which is a little different than the traffic study that took place that I went to that was over tomorrow and that's. By the SE. G uh price. Um, and it was just a chance to get together and discuss different things about basically Main Street. City and county. We have some team attendants. Also, the children tomorrow. There was some discussion there as well that that is continuing on that I'm thinking we get pretty close to seeing something for better destinations. We definitely will be scheduled, if I recall. Uh, also, I attended a water three oh three that Trish put on. Uh, there was a lot of good discussion there, really good information from the different. Public utilities that were um how they work between each other with their inter ties, being able to. Provide a little support and backup from one another if there's issues with their individual water systems. Moab Traffic Study was very um interesting. I shared with both of them before the meeting started, but. Think the thing that stuck out the most to me was they showed. Stoplights. Going through Moab and they had them all condensed into one slide and they showed people that go through the light when it's green, they go through when it's yellow. Then you go through when it's red and then they go through when it's been red for some time. So. That was a little bit eye opening that a lot of people don't mind that the light's been red for some time. That's where a lot of our accidents come in because it's. They're not just running a yellow. Light, they're definitely running a full blown red and they have those cameras up that can record all that. So that was.
That was the one that Evan referenced that was at the library that was put on?
Yes, it is. It's a.
Oh, okay. Interesting. Yeah.
They speak to pedestrian issues at all or just traffic?
Not pedestrians also, though, um, you know, we've got a couple of deaths of pedestrians and then. There's a an attempt to change the coloring of the crosswalks that makes them more visible because right now as you pull up to them. You have to get pretty close before you see the type of crosswalk. So there's some talk about. Coloring them artistically, but that would only be able to happen on the city side of one ninety one. It could have happened upon. You don't put a lot of that with their crosswalks. So there's definitely some pedestrian issues and they talked about, you know, a complete pedestrian. Crossing all the way, stopping traffic, but you know, it came down to. One ninety one's got flow. It it just has to and if we. And a lot of people who see the speed limit lowered. In fact, that's what this study showed was that it needs to be lowered, but when we do that, then the. Luckily learned that many people don't want to hear it, hears it said, and that is the. It's not four liter either, but it's bypass comes up. So. It the truck count has had a huge increase. Somebody quoted the light out by the South Maverick. Has happened twenty thousand trucks passed by it in one day. I don't know if that was actually, I didn't see any data at the back of it, but it was. There's substantial traffic through center of this town that's slowing it down. It's going to. Get here. It's up ahead and bypass where. So there was, there's a lot of information there. I believe it's worth the county seeing it. I offered to put it on the agenda if they wanted to and I've had. Two different attempts by Kevin to call me and we just haven't connected. So I I'm not sure if that's what his call is about or not, but I'm guessing.
Kevin?
Kevin.
Oh, the gentleman who put?
Yeah, the gentleman that came and spoke and didn't be heard. So.
I'm sorry, I missed the last meeting, so.
Yeah, so my apologies, but I I definitely think it's worth looking at because it extends outside the city limits to the county. There was discussion around the need by several citizens of a light at Aggie Boulevard. Thank you, Greg. Yeah. I mean, any one of us that have ever left there, it's almost you're just better to turn right and go up. It's a, it's a dodge to get left there, so. There, there was a lot of information, a lot, more than I could absorb, so. Um, I also went to the Grand County Transportation and I'll just, I'll let Mike update on that, but I was just there to report on the ongoing process of the Thompson Re-Plat. Which we have the discussion item and I also attended the Thompson Springs Jog and again, it's just to report on the Re-Plat, a little bit of what's going on there. And then there was also a UACT leadership meeting that the staff came. And leadership to the Moab and the church participant, well, we all met. At the. Jody Wyattson spent a couple hours down there just discussing, discussing the different meetings here in Grand County. I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, Trish?
So, yeah, a lot of, Bill covered a lot of things. I've said a lot of the things with him. Um, I will make sure that I get that water workshop to Alicia so that she can get it on YouTube or YouTube. Uh, but it is really good because it was all of our water service providers, so. City of Moab, Farm Leadership Company and Grand Water and Sewer, just their infrastructure. I thought like the Moab Leadership Panel, that was really cool, some of the history to that. You know, and how that system works. So I think it's really good for the general public to understand that because I think. You know, some, one of the common things is why does Mill Creek go dry in the summer, you know, and and those can easily be addressed by watching those videos. So um I went to Farm Days, which was really cool. It's put together by Heather Taylor, which is De Taylor's um. Oh my god, daughter-in-law, but it was, it's just great because it's like all these different entities in the county coming together and it's third graders. They go out to OSTA. It was amazing. So they had all these things set up. In OSTA, the whole arena was full and kids, you know, got to look at big pigs and learn how to rope a calf and so it was, it's just pretty, it was really cool little effort by everybody. I was, I was pretty impressed. US, USU extension, etc., and so on.
They let you rope a calf, Trish?
It was just a dummy. So, yeah, no, but I didn't, yeah, they don't let me do that kind of stuff. The planning commission was fairly mellow, but I just want to acknowledge Jenna um Corney, you know, has moved on and all that she did for the county. And we did have a discussion item brought up by one of the commissioners, Aaron Lindberg, regarding commercially, just commercial uses in general and the lack of commercial spaces and. Obviously, we know that there are kind of commercial uses getting pushed out into alternative zones. So it was, it was a great discussion. Um, we had a CJC meeting and I don't know, maybe Stephen, you could help me out with this because. You know, the big thing that was brought up is we are losing funding for, can you, can you help me out with this?
And Chrissy, Chrissy sent an email out.
Yes, she did.
Essentially, what's happening is there's been a reduction in allocation of funds from the federal level. And so that's going to trickle down and reduce some of the funding that she's going to get. We don't know the level of the impact yet, but since she's on a fiscal year, it'll come up. Here in the next month or so, and so we'll likely come to the county to ask for uh the county hopefully to cover that shortfall. Uh, that we're going to have generally uh that. The CJC doesn't cost a lot of money. Usually it's a funds that are provided by the federal government in the state government and this year likely there's going to be a shortfall. So we just wanted to send that out and I can help kick back up there, bump the email back up to your guys' top of your queue, just to give you an idea of what, what information's there. That's something that's coming up, so we want that preemptively alert you that we're asking for it.
Thank you so much. Um, I had a Grand Conservation District, actually, I'm going to bring up the, you guys. So Bill was there with Ben Musselman from Grand Water and Sewer, um, so pertaining to the groundwater. I always, Grand County Water Conservancy District and possibly this idea, we've heard the whole thing about. The DOE Pipeline coming out of Green River and they're talking about, you know, could, could that um district. Absorb that pipeline because they have the water rights to then move that water. Um, I also want to state that the Conservation District has a no-tilt drill, very small one. I think it's like four feet wide and also wood chipper that's available for rent, for rent. So just kind of throwing out that out to the general public. Um, and yeah, I think the rest I went to the same.
Uh, Bill, yeah?
Yes, sorry, Mike. I forgot also that I wanted to mention, you know, Robert. Trish mentioned Jenna.
Yes, absolutely.
But I really think we need to appreciate the fact that Robert put in a solid twenty-five years here and. I don't think that's an easy task. Uh, I I think every one of us can realize that twenty-five years working in one spot is a. Dedication in itself and I just want to commend him for the work that he has done for this county over the years. From what I know, I think he was an incredible individual, put a lot of time and heart into what he was doing.
Thank you very much for that, Bill. Yeah, yeah, I I appreciate that as well. The twenty-five year service to the county is 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 very, very much appreciated and admired. Thanks. Mike?
Uh, I attended the OSTA meeting the other night. Uh, went over actually sweet, uh, telling the, the OSTA uh advisory committee. That they're also the Grand County Fair. Uh, or at least acting right now. Uh, everything was received well there. Uh, went over a lot of the fair finances, uh, the directions the fair was heading home. And everything's coming together. I mean, on point with the fair as we do it now. Uh, also, that same night, I attended the Transportation uh Special Service District. Uh, that Bill was at, uh, went over many projects. Uh, one of built uh is the Mesa. It's the Mesa Desert Road uh project, getting that in line and things out there. Uh, and uh, as it's kind of just a juxtapose uh right now, just working on. Uh, there's many more projects that are going over. Uh, those projects are in discussion right now for the financial. Transportation Special Service.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Mary?
Uh, they have solid race special services. They're doing and helping people get their CDL. So they're getting closer to having enough uh drivers that have CDL. They're hoping to. Keep that staff going through the summer because now it's getting very difficult. There's also talking, we're going to be doing research on how to uh have. Fees adjusted to income. For so, and that's a process and it's going to, you know, take, it's going to take a lot of studying and a way to do it that could be streamlined and done. Fair. Does add a whole bunch of extra time on to our staff, while all like such very badness it is. Uh, just a reminder that I'm sure is having a field trip next Tuesday. Uh, if you're interested. Uh, let me know if you haven't already let Barbara show them. It's going to be in the morning. It was going to be on Monday, but it's changed to Tuesday. Uh, Thursday, uh, I had, uh, the fourth I had in the evaluation orientation meeting for. The evaluating and scoring each of the grants for the homeless committee again. I am happy to report they heard our feedback and the process is not as. I am happy to report they heard our feedback and the process is not as hard as it was last year. It's not going to take me forty-eight hours to, sixty hours to do. This is, uh, it's, it's. They've done a good job of changing it. I had, I turned in my scores on Monday. It was soon to be going through it, hopefully. Grand County, the way they've done the formula, they use that counted time. If you're familiar with it, where they go out in January on one night, it's really a poor way to determine how many, uh. Homeless people we have. And, and, uh, it's with. They use that to determine how much money each county gets. And ours is. Last year we got a nice chunk of change. I don't think we're going to get this good this year. Uh, we went to the Travel Council, uh, Chamber, uh, Travel, uh, Travel Council meeting. For future consideration, Kate Finley gave this incredible presentation on data, data they're collecting. It was so, uh, filled with information and such that keeping notes and, and being able to spring it into a summation so that. It won't take me a half hour. I think for a future consideration, we might want to have Kate. Give that presentation or re-presentation of at one of our meetings in the near future. I think it'd be valuable for all of us to know. Uh, Melissa Smocks gave a, uh, thing on the Banford Tour, it's where people come here to, to learn about what we have to operate. What we have to offer and people that where they're at and how, how that works. Was a very packed meeting. We ended up postponing one, two. Three, four, five, till the next week. Nice thing they won't have to do an objective, they're just rolling over. There was also discussion on ways of advertising so that, uh, we're meeting. Uh, having advertisements for your regular tourist, your sightseers. And advertising for your recreations, which are very different. And, uh, recreation, to, to, to give you recreation, because there's a lot of cities throughout the nation, one in Arkansas that's trying to claim that they're mountain. Like capital of the world, and they're doing that through lots of, uh. You know, working with different magazines and such. So that, uh, looking at different ways to advertise so that we're targeting certain groups and. The type of material that they read. They're not going to go to discoverable app. They're not going to go to the, uh, places that a sightseer or a tourist is going to go to. To figure out where to go. They're going to go to the magazines, to their, to their, their groups on different social medias and such. So. Trying to kind of, how can we, uh, adjust our advertising to that? See. Uh, I think they already brought it up, Steve did. I was going to, I've been, uh, thought maybe we might want to have. Just a short presentation on, uh, the C J C's funding and such at a future meeting. I think it's. I think it's really important. See, we've worked really hard to get a C J C in our community. We were one of the first communities to get one and. We've done a great job. We want to maintain that. So I think that'd be great. I had on my, uh, notes, I did want to recognize Robert. The Travel Council did recognize with a meeting, he, he, I, I have always thought Robert was a, uh, was a little shy, you know? He was always quiet and reserved and he chose not to come, but we did give him a certificate and everybody signed it later. And it is admirable to give twenty-five years of year. That's a quarter of a century. You know, so, uh, he hears, I, I want him to know that the county commission very much appreciates him. And Jenna, who was only here for a short amount of time, was an incredible, like, her presentations to the commission were great and I'm very sad to see her go. And I also want to recognize Sophia. You have been amazingly patient. You have sat through these meetings when they've gone till ten o'clock. Uh, I felt your reporting has been above what we've seen before a lot of times. You've done excellent job and I hope whoever replaces you comes close to your scale. So thank you very much. That's my report.
Thanks, Mary. Um, yeah, I, uh, let's see, on the tenth, I attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting and, um. A lot of new faces there. I, Lacy, I don't know if everyone's heard, but Lacy, uh, stepped down as the director of the Chamber of Commerce to take a, another position. Somewhere, and I just wanted to also express a lot of appreciation for her. She was a great director of that body. She worked really well with us as commissioners and the various boards that she was on as well. She'll certainly be missed, so thanks. Lacy for your service there, um, and I had the opportunity to meet their, the new chamber, um, director who is named. Uh, Cassie Oliver, and I think she will be great too. Excuse me? Yes, actually, I have leave to her, to, to Alicia's, uh, husband. I think they, I believe they're cousins, but Alicia can let you know that. But yeah, no, Cassie looks like she'll be, she'll be great, so, um. Kudos to the chamber for, for finding another, for a great replacement for Lacy, who we hope will be a great replacement. Um, we had discussion of luncheon topics and speakers, uh, there for, for future luncheons. Each, each month, there's a chamber luncheon. Also, we discussed, uh, planning efforts for the annual May thirty-first scholarship golf tournament that the chamber puts on. And this year, uh, the chamber's putting on the business summit, so we're discussed, uh, we're definitely in the, the planning stages for that. At the chamber. Uh, same day, I, uh, attended a T S S D meeting, um. There is a discussion on, uh, applicants, T S S Ds, you guys probably know, has been, has been. Short of its, uh, five-person board for a long time. It's, it's, it's kind of, it's, it's been proving, it's. Proving difficult to find qualified applicants or people who, who want to come out and join that board who, who qualify. So we had a discussion of qualifications at that meeting and I followed up some questions with our county attorney here. And we'll get to that later and hopefully work some of that out. Uh, also, the, uh, skida, uh, metering bids were discussed. That, that is, uh, the grant from. Um, C I B that they were able to procure. So talking about, uh, the best, uh, companies to go with to set up their new modern metering. Um, we also did discussion about asking a private landholder if, um. If, if we could work, if the T S S D could work out arrangements to, to potentially drill a well on his land. Um, so those were the, the main highlights at that meeting. Um, on Saturday, I participated in the Spring Spruce Up that Trail Mix has put on. This is the second year in a row for that. Um, it was an awesome event. My whole family came out. Uh, Trail Mix does a great job in conjunction with, um. Various, uh, volunteer and nonprofit organizations to, to do trail projects in all of Grand County, uh. Uh, tons of kudos to, to the Trail Mix volunteers, total volunteers. No one, no one was paid for any position there. Especially, uh, the chair of that, Colin Topper, uh, did a great job, dedicated a lot of hours to organizing the event. Uh, the event ended up having seventy volunteers working on seven different projects in Grand County. And this year, there was also a, a motorized project to work on, so it was really nice to include that segment of the community in the Springs Persept. Um, and hope, and we just hope that event continues and grows. Um, and lastly, I wanted to, uh, just mention that. The Museum of Moab, of which I'm a board member, is putting on its annual, uh, gala on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth. I think there's a few tickets left for that, so that's at, at six P M. If anyone's interested in attending that, it's an awesome event. It's a great fundraiser for the museum. The museum's just kicking butt. Um, doing a great job, so, uh, contact the museum to get your tickets for the gala. And that will do it for my report. Um, we'll move on to elective official reports and I'll start with our clerk, Dave.
Thanks, Jac. Um, well, it's, I had the Larson and Company C P A came in for the audit last week. None of that's. Uh, was, you know, no big surprises in terms of how that process went. I'll touch on it a little bit more in our, um, in our agenda and our action items, um. And. Other than that, I don't think I have anything to report at this time. U Act Legislative Management Conference is coming up at the end of this month and I'm really looking forward to some of the conversations. That I'll be having with some of the other clerks and auditors at that, um, at that conference, and I hope to attend it with some of you all as well.
Thank you, Dave. Um, Stephen?
Yeah, um, this morning we had, the appeal was heard by our hearing officer, Mr. Paul. Uh, that was the appeal from the Easy Street C U P application. He took all the evidence, uh, did a site visit, went through it very, very thoroughly. He said he'll get a report to us. And his decision here in the next few weeks, uh, depending on what he decides, if it is. Something that is going to be approved with conditions, he said we'll come back and hopefully the parties can mediate what additional provisions. Alternatively, if he denies it. Then that will be the decision as a denial and then they have right to proceed to, uh, to the district court if they want.
Um. Steve, just on a procedural thing, if it is denied, then would it come, I remember we had a, actually I did it at our last commission meeting about, um. Kind of terms out there. I was wondering if, in the case of denial, we have to bring that back?
Yeah, I think, I think the complaint still remains open.
Okay.
And so that's something that was brought up. We didn't go into, uh, it very much. He, uh, he didn't see some of the reason. Asked why we'd bring it up, but I didn't comment on it. I do think it's still a lingering issue that we have to resolve that complaint. If it's denied, then I, I think that's only, only reasonable to still get final. Post to that chapter. Um, apart from that, tomorrow I leave for U, U P C, which is Utah Prosecution Council. They'll provide what's called a legislative update. Where they provide all the notice, all the laws that have, uh, changed there. Um, I attended the auction that the, that was hosted out at O S T A. It was, uh, well attended. It was a very eclectic, unique, different crowd. Uh, the things that were auctioned off were equally eclectic, unique and, uh, interesting. So that was a really interesting turnout. I hope they do that again.
Was it a third-party auction or county auction?
It was a consignment auction.
Oh, interesting.
And so they had a mix of everything from firearms to, which are laundry baskets to. You could bring, again, I, it's great for sprinkling, you can just drag anything out there and put it on a pallet and they'll auction it off.
Yeah. I agree with that. Thank you.
Yeah, so next time, uh. Apart from that, pinwheels, if you see pinwheels out and about, they're for, uh, protection child abuse. Be thinking of that. I did attend the Deadliest Road, uh, seminar put on by Miss Karen Guzman and. Uh, the other gentleman, his name's escaped me.
Kevin Dwyer.
Kevin Dwyer. Uh, it was a good presentation. Ultimately, they sta- stated that, uh, they're trying to push having. Uh, aesthetically, aesthetic changes to help promote reducing speeds, be it, uh, painting lines closer, trees. Uh, maybe your center, center median. Uh, ultimately, they stated that lowering the speed limit in their mind is the best way to avoid additional casualties. They're pretty, pretty reasonable with all the things that they presented. They did a good job. But I, I don't know, that's the big question, whether they actually could afford to use the speed, but that's, that's what the presentation was about. That's everything I have.
What was the limit that they're proposing it be reduced to?
Twenty, twenty miles per hour on Main Street and then reducing, uh, reducing everything in out of the valley, basically by either ten or fifteen miles per hour, just kind of their, their.
A long limit.
Basically from, I'd say about the element all the way through, uh, USU. Just kind of chugging dropping down the speeds. They took issue with the fact that we have a speed up, uh, near city market. So I guess from thirty to thirty-five. So they pointed out some interesting things. I, I, I like their data and their statistics. Some of the accidents caused on Main Street, I don't, I don't know that speed would have changed them, because you had that gentleman that was fleeing the police.
Yeah.
I don't know whatever speed limit would have necessarily stopped him, but it was good information and, uh, they're willing to present to any, anybody that would.
Great. Thanks, Stephen. And it looks like Jameson is, is, uh, not doing a report today. Do you guys hear him at all? Okay. Great. Um, alright, we'll move on to Commission Administrator Report. That is you, Mallory.
Yes, I did not have a chance to put anything together, but I do have some updates for you guys, so I'll send them out.
Sure. Alright, Quinn? Great. Okay, that, uh, brings to conclusion our general reports section. And we are now on to our general business action items, discussion and consideration approval. Um, I believe, uh, on our agenda, item number one is, we, we won't be. Getting into that. That one is unnecessary and we will start with, uh, item number two on our agenda, which is Q four twenty twenty-four special event intent to apply. I T As and I'll welcome Kate Finley, our Special Events Program Manager.
So we, we covered this in the workshop. Um, and if you all want, we can run through basically just the list month by month since we already had discussion. Alright, so October, we have Outer Bike, which is a bike expo. Rexy Queen of the Desert, which is a gravel race. I did talk to the organizer. He said ninety percent of their participants shuttle to the start and anticipates fifteen, so one, five vehicles for that event. Moab two forty, which is a trail run, the Red Canyon Powwow Jeep Jamboree. And the Moab Trail Marathon for October. And for November, we have the Dead Horse Ultra, which is a trail running event. December, the Moab Locals ten K, which is a road running event. That's it for quarter four. And then for early twenty twenty-five in January, we have the Arches Ultra Trail Running Event. For February, Moab's Red Hot Ultra, again, trail running. And then in March, we have the Skinny Tire Festival, which is a road biking event, the Canyonlands Half Marathon. And the Behind the Rocks Ultra, which is another trail running event.
Yeah, that's.
I can share my screen if you all need to see the, I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve Outer Bike. Uh, yeah, October, uh, Rexy Queen of the Desert in October. Moab twenty, uh, two hundred and forty endurance run in October. The Red, uh, Canyon, uh, Powwell. The Moab Jeep Jamboree. I think I've missed gone to another month. Correct? Just another one. Okay, uh, Moab Marathon, Half Marathon. Uh. Decem- okay, November, approve Dead Horse Ultra. December, Moab Local ten K. January, Mad Moose Event. I make a motion that we approve all of those events as presented in the workshop.
So, so Mary, in, in January, you just said Mad Moose Event. Did you mean like all three of them or?
Oh, excuse me. In January, there, what's down here is, uh, Arches Ultra, which serves mothers in January.
Well, I, I guess, and then there were others further into the quarter, like the, the half marathon in March, things like that.
February was the hot, uh, Red Hot, uh, Ultra. Oh, I do have March, March Skinny Tire Festival. Canyonlands Half Marathon, Behind the Rocks Ultra. Excuse me.
Okay, I think that, so, so the intention was to list everything that was on the list. Great.
I got it.
Okay, second for Mike. Alright, I have a motion on the table to approve, uh, from Commissioner McGann and a second from Commissioner McCurdy. Um, any further discussion on these events?
Um, you know, just some general remarks. I thi- I think all of these events are, are ones that have happened before, so we're, we're not looking at new ones here, so. I think our practice in the past has been to, we've got an existing event and there's no blemishes on the record. We tend to approve it. You know, once they've, you prove it, they can post a successful event, so we didn't have any. You know, difficult calls with new events. Um, similarly, I, I think most of this was a kind of uncrowded part of the calendar, so we didn't. Um, we have to worry too much about you getting, getting too much in one month. There's something like that, so. You know, preserve some institutional memory in that, you know, some, sometimes we don't approve everything.
Yeah.
These were relatively easy for those reasons.
Great. Mike?
Wanted to say thank you for, uh, getting the heads up on how you can break the, uh. Overlapping events do matter, uh, and getting that answer pretty fast.
Sure. Alright, uh, thanks, Mike. Um, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hands. And the motion. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, we are now on to agenda item three, resolution, Kane Springs Improvement District Conditional Use Permit for major utility. And uh presenting this, we'll have our planning and zoning. Um, Alisa Martin, as well as our uh county engineer, Dan Stent. Hi, Alisa, and thank you so much for being here. And I, I know uh there's some extenuating circumstances, so I, I really want you to, you know, if, if you're not feeling up to anything, we very much understand.
Thank you. I am gonna probably keep my presentation pretty brief and then kind of pass it to Dan for anything that he would want to add and then open it up to questions. Um, so let me just quickly Well, I, I don't feel like I need to share my screen because y'all know where, we're talking about, so I'm not gonna put up a resume app. Like, everybody knows where, where we are here with this conditional use permit. Um, so what you have in front of you um for consideration today is a conditional use permit in order to construct a and operate a major utility in highway commercial zoning on parcels referenced in the staff report. Specifically, the major utility proposed is a wastewater treatment plant with a design treatment capacity of two hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day. And a culinary water storage tank with the nominal capacity of seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons, which ul- would ultimately serve a future mixed-use subdivision and development on the surrounding one hundred and seventy-six acres along Kane Creek Road. The applicant originally submitted a preliminary plot application for subdivision in May of twenty twenty-one and subsequently submitted a revised application to the planning department in February of twenty twenty-two. The processing of the preliminary plot application was put on hold once it was determined that the public sewer system would constitute a major utility, uh, which requires a conditional use permit in highway commercial zoning, um, per Land Use Code Article Three. The applicant is the Kane Springs Improvement District. And just to provide a little bit of background on how the improvement district was um created. So in October of twenty twenty-two, the KSID was issued a certificate of creation by the Lieutenant Governor and subsec- subsec- subsequently, the Utah Division of Water Quality notified the applicant that they would require um, them to estab- establish a body politic in order to obtain a construction permit for a public sewer system. As Grand County was not willing to serve as the sponsoring body politic, the applicant requested um, that the Utah Division of Public Utilities to serve in that capacity. The entities signed an MOU to solidify that arrangement in February fifteen, twenty twenty-three. During that time, the applicant worked with the Utah Division of Water Quality and Division of Drinking Water for preliminary approval of the public water sewer systems system to serve the project. In a letter issued by the DEQ Division of Water Quality dated March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, an approval in concept was granted, subject to several conditions. In June of twenty twenty-three, a certificate of replacement was then issued by the Lieutenant Governor, which established the Board of Trustees for the KSID and rendered the district a functioning improvement district. The KSID submitted their CUP application for the major utility to the planning department on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Said application was deemed complete on December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. So that's just kind of giving you like a rough background or general summary of how we got to this point. Um, in addition, let's see. So, okay, to move on to um the real kind of meat of the staff report. So the CUP review and items for consideration. And considering the approval or denial of the CUP, the commission must make findings that support their decision, their decision. And those findings must be based on whether or not the proposed use is consistent with the county's general plan, the land use code and other county ordinances. As well as whether or not the anticipated detrimental impacts of the major utility as listed in Land Use Code nine point ten point five conditional use criteria can be mitigated. In terms of consistency with the county's general plan, staff found that while the property falls within the land use designation of highway mixed use on the original future land use map created in twenty twelve. The proposed use is not consistent with the upgrade updated language in the twenty thirty general plan, section seven, which states that highway commercial uses are to be located along a major arterial or commercial corridor. The subject property where a major utility is being proposed is located on a major collective. Furthermore, this location has not been identified as an emerging residential or commercial node in recent public workshops and steering committee meetings dedicated to the update of the land use chapter of the general plan and future land use plan. In the staff report, we've gone into some great detail to analyze the potential detrimental impacts of the proposed sewer treatment plant and public facilities in this location. And staff has reviewed the proposed use against the criteria in section nine point ten point five and provided findings and evidence for each criterion. Along with recommendations, uh, recommended conditions of approval that the commission may apply in their final decision. In the essence of time, I won't go into the details of each conditional use criterion. Um, but we can certainly answer any specific questions as they come up after this presentation. So just in conclusion, um, as I alluded to previously, the technical review of both the public drinking water systems and the wastewater treatment system fall under the purview of the Utah Division of Drinking Water and Utah Division of Water Quality respectively. Final county commission action on any related subdivision, final plot or administrative approval or related site plan application is dependent upon the state's final plan approval and issuance of a construction permit for the wastewater treatment plant and the public water system. Certificates of occupancy will not be issued for any use dependent on water and sewer service from KSID until the state has issued an operating permit for the wastewater treatment facility and the public water system. If the CUP is approved, the planning department will continue to process the preliminary plot application for subdivision. Which is an administrative review process, so as long as planning staff finds that the plot meets all requirements of the Land Use Code and State Statute. The zoning administrator must approve that preliminary plot application. Upon approval of the preliminary plot, a final plot would be submitted and ultimately would need administrative approval by the commission before building permits can be pulled. And that basically concludes my kind of setting up the conversation and the staff report summary. Um, I'll pass it over to our county engineer, Dan, if he has any additional items that he'd want to cover or highlight that I may have overlooked, and then we can just open up for questions.
But before that, I'd, I'd say, Alisa, if there, I don't, I don't know how comfortable you are here, but if you want, if you needed to excuse yourself, I'm totally understanding of that. I don't know if you wanted to field questions first and then maybe um take off or, or it's, it's totally your prerogative. Just let me know.
Thank you. Okay.
Would, would you prefer questions at this point or do you think, or after Dan?
I think I'm okay to, to field some questions. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, and I actually have other things that have to present on further down in the agenda too, so.
All right, well, we definitely un- understand.
Yeah, they're pretty simple.
Okay, okay, thank you, Alisa. Yeah, yeah, we, and yeah, actually, that's a good, good point. We potentially, we could move your agenda items up and so, yeah.
Yeah, if, if that, if it does start to get a little
Right.
involved, we could consider that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, okay, Dan, you're.
Um, yeah, I, you know, I tried to go into like, like Elisa said, go into great detail on each one of the criteria that are listed in the code, land use code, under conditional uses um and anticipate and to analyze any kind of reasonably anticipated uh detrimental factors. That's the, that's the yardstick there that we're using. And then.
Sorry, Dan, I'm, which document in the packet or contains um what you're talking about now, the going through those, cause I'm, I guess I'm not seeing it.
That was hugely helpful. The staff report that you guys see here is a collaborative effort. Jenna, myself and Dan worked on the staff report. So I think, yeah, Dan was talking about kind of going through the conditional use permit criterion. Um, and kind of helping out with uh really good, bringing a lot of good points uh regarding the anticipated detrimental effects of a major utility in the location and then providing some possible mitigation measures.
Okay, so and that's in the agenda summary document.
The staff.
The staff.
Okay, that, that's what I'm.
It's not, it should be uh presented to underscore SR underscore.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
And in the staff report, I will point out um part, this, our staff report is kind of a standard form that all the planning and applications use and one of the criteria is consistency with the general plan. Consistency with the general plan is also listed as one of the specific criterion under the conditional use permit. So it does kind of appear twice in, in this report as we go through the criterion A through F, E. Um, but Lisa addressed it um kind of upfront. She did not make any proposed or recommended conditions associated with with the general plan criteria, right?
Oh, right.
So we can go through these. I can answer questions, specific questions. Um, I can explain logic behind um the analysis. Uh, I don't know what levels detail the commission would like to hear.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I didn't know if, we didn't have questions right now. I know the advocate is in, is in person now. It's a good time to introduce.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with Stephen. Uh, is, I think it's Bruce, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't invite you forward if you wanted to. Thanks. Don't forget to sh- shift the mic over.
Thank you very much. First, I want to express our extreme appreciation for hard work that the staff has done. And I was hoping you weren't going to be here. I was hoping you were gonna be at Sine. And we weren't intruding on you in any way more than we needed to. And if there's anything we can do to make it better for you, please let me know. Appreciate it so much. Had it not been for a timing issue, we, we just found this out obviously last week. We, we would have tried to reschedule this, but we're trying to do everything we can to accommodate. Uh, I just have a few thoughts and questions. First of all, I've given Stephen some uh a, a summary that I usually do about how five oh six, uh, the conditional use permit of the code, of the state code of Clutman is to be interpreted, cause it's weirdly written. I know you've all had some very good training on it. But I, I sort of try to always parse it out in a, in a logical construct as opposed to the negative, what I call the negative double backflip way that it's written by legislative general counsel's office. Cause they're just not very good at writing things. So all I've tried to do is actually take the words from the statute and put them in a logical order rather than an illogical order. But I'm not gonna take very long here. I, I wanna go through just a couple of comments from the staff report. Uh, because generally, we agree with the staff report uh and the uh agenda summary with just a couple of little uh notes. First of all, I've talked to uh your county attorney about the uh timing and it's on the second to last page of the agenda summary. What it says is, and the following conditions must be met before approval. As you've seen in my letter of April fourteenth to you, these, mostly these conditions can't be met before approval. They're operating conditions or build conditions. So it's more common to say that we approve it subject to you complying with everything in the future. And I think that was the way staff intended it to be. So I don't think that's a very big issue. The only other issue with the conditions is condition number two, shall contract with WISA. Uh, we're perfectly happy to contract with WISA if WISA will have us. Uh, but the note basically says at the end of that condition that if WISA somehow terminates, we just have to bring in an alternative plan. Obviously, what we're, what you're trying to say is we have to contract with an operator who's skilled and professional, et cetera. Whether it's on the front end or the back end, whether it's WISA or someone else, and we're perfectly happy to do that. We have no desire to do anything other than that. So that's the minor modification that we would make. I, I, I would note a minor disagreement with the staff on finding number six about the inconsistency with the general plan. First of all, it, the quoted part in Romanet two, finding six, and I'm sorry, I I always forget myself to number pages and I always suggest to people, you should number pages, but that's okay. Like, y'all make mistakes and I do that all the time. But in Romanet number two, says allowing for orderly development of automobile-dependent accommodation and services for residents, tourists along major arterials. I, I'm not sure that how, how this water treatment plant is not a service. Uh, it is absolutely a necessary service. So we don't believe that it's in any way inconsistent with your general plan. And even if it somehow were inconsistent with the general plan, your general plan and the, the code that you have a subsection E, uh, has it, contains essentially an inherent inconsistency in itself. Because you've got to be co- consistent with the land use plan, sorry, the general plan and the land use code. Well, we are consistent with the code. Because as the note specifically says, this is specifically allowed in the zone. So to the extent that there's an inconsistency or an ambiguity, as I'm sure you've learned from all of your land use training and your thousands of hearings on these matters, if there's an inconsistency or an ambiguity in the code, it's construed in favor of the private property rights applicant. So we don't think that finding six is right and we don't think it would be an ob- uh, and uh, an obstacle for approval. Otherwise, I'm here mostly to answer any questions. I, I made careful notes of what some of the people before uh said. And, and basically, most of them were all going outside the scope of this CUP and trying to conflate the CUP to the larger development as a whole in terms of adverse uh reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. And we don't believe that is appropriate. Uh, other than that, I'm here to answer any questions. We have, I believe, our uh, our engineer on the line. He too, but I don't think there's any technical engineering questions because I think your engineers did a very good job of going through these. The, the simple answer is we will operate this plant, build this plant in complete, these two facilities, in compliance with all applicable provisions of state law, county law, federal law. We will not violate any uh water quality. We will not violate any water rights. We will not violate any uh four oh four. You, you, we will not violate any Endangered Species Act. We will comply in all regards with all applicable uh codes, regulations and rules. Otherwise, if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, oh, what, I do have one more thing. Otherwise, I'm just gonna stay through the uh, the remainder of the public comment and home and hopefully get Alisa home quicker. Uh, Stephen did call me and ask about the timing of our ripcord proposal. The forty-five days, which is commonly referred to as the ripcord proposal. Uh, it's my understanding from Stephen, I think he's right that uh, you have a meeting on the seventh and the ripcord would run out on the sixth. You have an option, of course, and we hope you take it. We strongly suggest that you should to give this matter the consideration it deserves without ruining another one of your agendas. Uh, so if you want to schedule a sep- a condition, a separate meeting, a special meeting in two weeks, we'd be happy to be here and participate. But if you absolutely need uh to go to the seventh uh as a courtesy to staff, which has done such a great job uh on, and working hard on this, we would be uh willing to agree to toll the ripcord until the seventh, so you could vote on it at the seventh. Uh, Stephen called me while I was on my way down and I, I cleared that with my clients. Uh, how can you say no to Alissa? So uh, that's my theory and fact. Anyway, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Uh, if you don't, I'm happy to just go back. I'm sitting back for another half hour.
Thanks, Bruce. Um, I guess the, we were asked questions for uh Dan as well, so I would bring it back to questions in general.
I'll just make a quick comment too. So the recommended conditions for the most part are sort of recapping some things that are already sort of required under state code, various things. Um, in, in one of the workshops that we did on conditional uses, some of the guidance was that that is a something that you can add into the condition.
Something that you can add into the condition use because it gives the county then some. If if the state jurisdiction or any other jurisdictions fails to force their regulations or. Skin in the game by by adding those. They may see, and some of them may seem obvious, like, you know, requiring a permit or requiring. Sorts of things, but that was, that was based on the workshops.
And and we're perfectly happy to comply with this, the most I've ever seen is forty-seven different conditions and all forty-seven of those were applied with the law.
All right, can I open it up for for questions?
Yeah, um, sure, I had a. I think Bruce just, um, was talking about compliance with the general plan, which is in our land use code, you know, section nine ten five, but it's. It's also in Ludla, I mean, there's a somehow, you know. Util, this this type of utility is treated differently than most other land uses, I'm talking about seventeen twenty seven eight four oh six. Uh, I think one of the commoners brought it up, but it's just. You know, after legislative body has adopted a general plan, though, they they list a bunch of things and then they include, um. You know, public utility, whether publicly or privately owned, may be constructed or authorized until and unless it conforms to the current general plan. Um, our general plan is, you know, is pretty big and worthy. And there's a lot of things in there, to me at least, seem like this is not compatible with, uh, I just wanted to get your reaction to that.
Mr. Walker, I'm I'm familiar with four oh six and, uh, I heard, uh, Emily bring that up as well. Uh, what I'm going to suggest to you is that we will be filing with you a written briefing on that issue rather than having me address it. Here on the fly, I will submit a written briefing on that.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, um. Further questions for any of these guys?
Well, Lisa, it was taking me a second to catch up, uh, the. Portal was running slow, when you were summarizing your staff report, there was a. Can you go back to kind of like that very first paragraph, the findings, I think that in the agenda summary, the. Top page summary didn't get, uh, a recommendation from staff.
Are you, are you talking about the condition, the criterion under nine point ten point five, like each one of those items? So you talked about the first one?
Um, typically, when we have, uh, things from your office, we get a recommendation of like approval or denial.
Oh.
And, uh, I didn't see that in the summary, but then I thought you might have mentioned it in your staff report and I was scrambling to catch up. It's there.
It's, I I don't know if we put it in the staff report, but definitely in the agenda summary, we, um, provided a. Recommend a recommended motion, but we did not specifically recommend approval or denial. We recommend if you are approving, then.
Uh, yeah.
Um, conditions that we provide for. Uh, a- approval.
Yeah.
Staff, staff is neutral? Essentially. I, you know, I would say, I, I would say that if I had to just kind of. On the flights, uh, provide a recommendation, it would just basically be looking at the staff report and the findings and if you can. If there's something that we missed that you you can come up with, that's a, uh, and a detrimental impact. Or something that's not consistent with our general plan or land use code that you could make the. Conclusion that you could deny the CUP, then that would be your prerogative, but. I think what we found in the staff report is that. Most of the impacts of this specifically, this major utility, not the future subdivision. There aren't really any unmitigated impacts that could be.
Yeah, come on. Um, yes, so so following up on what Alyssa just said, um. You know, the the state code, you know, refers to effects and it, you know, it's it's not a defined term, so if you just look at the. Dictionary definition of effects, I I guess it seems to me that this, these utilities are enabling a very large proposed development. Um, and so when we look at effects, I I, again, and I'm happy, you know, happy to hear counter arguments to this, but I've been looking. You know, like on the ombudsman page and, you know, the court cases that they sign, and I haven't found anything that would constrain, you know. That would say that effects means anything other than the, you know, the common English meetings, so I think the effect of. You know, introducing utilities into an area that previously didn't have them and which previous county commissions, you know. Treated the zoning as as if, you know, there wasn't a lot of development potential there, um, are the soul of development and and. I think you've taken a different view on the staff report, but. I I I think that, you know, gives a very different view of effects and I think a lot of them are sort of clearly not mitigable. Um, you know, I could go through A through F, you know, individually, I I I don't. I'm not worried about F, but A through E all seem to me, and I can go into more detail if you like, I probably will later in this conversation. Um, do you have effects that would be difficult to mitigate, um? If if we interpret effects, you know, it's the way most people would, so, um, I I think if Bruce. If if there's, you know, some case I've missed that says, you know, effects has to be construed narrowly, um, you know. I'm I'm all ears, but that that was one thing that jumped out to me.
Problem is you, your reading of it, you dropped off three words of the statute. Says anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use, you can't read those words out. There's one use that you're being asked to consider and that proposed use is only. The two water plants, uh, the two plants, uh, I understand your argument and there are no cases of which I'm aware. Nor ombudsman's opinions that say whether you can look at the follow-on effects of it. But I don't think under basic rules of statutory construction, and I I hope your attorney will agree with me. Uh, I I don't believe that you can drop the words, uh, of the proposed, four words, I guess, of the proposed use. I don't believe you can read them out of the statute, uh, where you can't read them and to say. That what you want them to say, if the legislature had intended to say. Of the proposed use and any logical follow-ons resulting therefrom, it could have done that, it didn't do that. It limited it to the use in particular, obviously, it's a legal question and you're going to get advice from your county attorney. Uh, I'm not aware of any, as I say, guidance from any sources other than. The common essentials of statutory construction.
Okay, yeah, no, thanks for that, that does directly address what I was asking about, but I I guess I just don't see how those four words fix it. I'm earlier this morning, we had a an administrative hearing on a different conditional use permit. It was, you know, much smaller than this, it was a commercial use in a residential area, and a lot of the discussion was about, um, traffic. You know, people driving to and from this use and, um, the ALJ Craig Craig Hall. Um, he didn't have not, you know, he did not say that we were somehow by considering the effect, you know. One or two blocks away of increasing number of trucks driving by, that that, you know, is not of effect of use, it's an effect of people driving, you know. The traffic that creates, so.
They were driving for the purpose of that use, in this case, your engineer evaluated correctly, I believe. The actual impact of this proposed use on things like traffic, et cetera. And that impact of on this proposed use itself is de minimis, and that's my point, you're looking at a second, a second level effect. Where, and again, I wasn't at the hearing today, but this, the first level effect, your city and your town, sorry, your county engineer. Analyzed it very thoroughly and we believe correctly, and there are no first level effects, uh, relating to infrastructure at all. Your staff report's very, very clear and good on that, I understand your arguments about second level effects.
Okay, thanks, and and if you wanted to, you know, follow up with something written about that, that.
I'll follow up, but the, I'll probably follow up, but I'm gearing, I'm about ninety-eight percent certain that what I'm going to do, put in writing is essentially what I just said, but.
Yes, that's.
If there's something else that that I'm unaware of, I I will confess, I don't know everything about land use law, just most of it. All.
Very, one of the things that I I'm concerned that can't, hasn't been proven that could be mitigated. Is in the development of the sewer plant, that's going to involve a great deal of equipment and traveling and. That road, I don't think it's been proven that it can handle that kind of heavy traffic. That's going to require, uh, and. The engineering for, we have not seen the engineering for that road to be, uh, brought up to the level that needs to be. In order for, uh, that plant to be constructed. And we also have, if we are going to through the road. There are many right of ways that we don't know if they're going to be granted, so, uh. I'm concerned that the road is not doable to the development of said project. Not even respond, not even talking about the proposed development, the project of developing and building. The sewer plant is going to require a lot of movement and work to use on that road that I don't think. Is too standard that can handle it, and I haven't seen anything that addresses that.
This is sort of a chicken and an egg kind of situation, there's no requirement upfront. That you demonstrate full engineering details of how a road can be handled, the way you would handle that, be. Make it a condition of approval for constructing it, that there be a mitigation, adequate mitigation plan. Uh, except to pursuant to county ordinances to to make sure that the the tr- traffic on that road constructing the project. Is adequately handled, it's a simple answer.
But not a simple solution.
I I didn't say it was a simple solution, I said it was a simple answer and it's a simple condition that you can render, but you can't speculate that we can't do something. When you have an easy condition that you can propose, which is that in building this plant. We will preserve and take care of the road pursuant to applicable county ordinances, that's a condition that you can impose and we will live with. Uh, and therefore you can't deny the CUP based on that, simple.
Uh, Dan, you were going to respond.
Uh, yes, I was gonna talk about that, so you may recall, um. There was prior, prior to my working for the county, previous year, Dave Dillman. Was doing the review stuff on the preliminary plat, um, and and one of the comments that came out of there, there's a traffic study. That was done and reviewed and looked into and out of that, and I believe there was some discussion with. Steve, that Stephen was involved in, had to do with bringing it up to a certain minimal level. Uh, prior to construction, I think was the wording, um, and then at a certain threshold density. Bringing it up to minor collector standard, so Bill Jackson did raise this issue to me this morning that. We should probably include in that, it has a condition that prior to construction. Work happening on these facilities, that the road should be brought up to a pavement with the twenty feet. We have, they have, the applicant has submitted engine drawings for that work. The applicant, applicants cares to to do the first phase, the widening to twenty feet, um.
What what is the width currently, Dan?
It varies, the narrowest is about sixteen and a half places, um. You know, it it varies a lot, it went for the section between. Where the guardrail is and the private property start is probably the most critical section there. Uh, and in that, some areas are over twenty feet right now, but but, uh, I think. Maybe two thirds of that was was less than twenty, so this. Uh, plan set basically looked everywhere where it was less than twenty and looked at, you know, adding, in some cases, the addition would have to be. On the inside.
Yeah.
In order to get, because it's right up against the bed, it's the, yeah, right, look at that, so, you know, involve.
We're on a total construction, uh, it's a relatively easy, small operation. I don't know about all the construction, but I don't believe this is going to be the the end of the world as we know it and. Again, we're happy to live with reasonable engineering conditions.
Thank you, uh, Bill.
Uh, couple of things, one, I I just think that our staff has done a very commendable job here. They seem to have covered every base and done the best that they can with a. Very hot topic, if you can put it that way, I don't think that I want to be in their shoes anymore, going to be an hour to. But I appreciate what they've done for sure, but my question goes back to the, I think you call it a ripcord effect. So we're basically would be putting off the decision until the next commission meeting, is that the purpose of the ripcord?
No, no, no.
So I don't totally understand that.
What has happened is if if the applicant, after a reasonable period of time, requests a decision. The county or whatever, the county commission or the, uh, planning, planning commission, whoever had the ultimate decision in this case, it's the commission. They have forty-five days to make a determination, if they fail to make that determination, then the applicant has the ability to sue in the district. So that's, that's the difficulty, when we calculated out the date, it would be May sixth, they've stated they would give us an additional day to May seventh. No one said anything about a continuance yet, I mean, if the commission wanted to continue it, I I know I received many emails regarding that. Uh, but if there was a a continuance, would we need to be looking at, uh, two weeks from today is the fifth Tuesday. I know I don't, I know, if anyone wants to come to a special meeting, theoretically, give it a special meeting, we're going to put it on the seventh, those are the two options. We just ignore it, then I I would be surprised if the applicant didn't to take the decision to seek litigation in the district court, because that would at least.
Then the second part of my question would be. What is the liability to the county if we decide to either deny or do nothing on it? Where's where's the liability?
So in in that same statute, there's no monetary damages attached to the rip. However, if if there is a decision made, uh, by the ombudsman's office that the county is acting improperly. And we ignore that decision that the county can subject itself to damages and. Believe it was Twilla County that was subject to, uh, lost profits, uh, but that was an egregious example.
I have some ability with that case, it was actually to Twilla City and it was a development agreement, it's probably not applicable here. But it was nice because it got me twenty-two million dollars.
Gen- generally, we're, the the county. Uh, generally, the county has an obligation to proceed and to process these applications and not just push them out indefinitely. And so that's, that's the concern, and in the conditional use permit, uh, arena, we have only limited things that we can do, we can impose. Uh, mitigation on reasonably anticipated detrimental effects in accordance with county standards. And that's, that's the difficulty that we have, is if we don't have standards to it, then we can't. We can't just make up rules and apply them to them to try to get them to go away, we have to, we have to state. We want this, uh, this facility to comply with these list of rules, that's why we have to be, that's where, sorry, that's why we have the drinking water. And all the other provisions that attach to it, and that's the standards on which we're applying, putting them, uh, putting them with. Same with the the roads and maintaining that, if there's not a standard that's listed in our code, uh, as we've talked about before. It puts the county in in a different position and that and that's. That it it's a really frustrating position for the county to be in, because conditional uses are something that the county at one point chose to allow. But once you choose to allow it, the state legislature has made it very clear that we can't just deny it for any reason that we would like. It has to, has to find a reason that that cannot be medicated. The the concern that I have, and again, this is early in the application process, we're looking at a treatment facility. Our staff has had this and they reviewed it and they've gone through and I don't. I I think they've done a very good job, everybody's commending them on the job that they did, so unless there are other things that the county can identify, that perhaps they didn't look at. Or perhaps they didn't review, and we can't find other things that don't comply with the standards, that the county puts itself, it's it becomes a really untenable situation. Where our experts have looked at this, have vetted it, have done everything they can and they say, look. I don't think anybody in this room says, well, I, you know, people maybe, maybe no one in this room is really jumping up and down and excited about. Prospect of this water treatment facility, however, we have the standards that we have to comply with and it just makes it really difficult when. However, we have the standards that we have to comply with and it just makes it really difficult when. Staff has gone through and done everything that they can't can't find anything, so. Yeah, I know we've had lots of emails and I know we've had lots of armchair scientists, uh attorneys or. They may actually be scientists, attorneys, and they're putting a lot of input. If there are things that have come up for the commissioners that they'd like to explore, I would encourage them to talk to staff to see, hey. Uh so and so brought up these concerns and vet them with them, because if they've addressed them in our plan or if they don't apply. That's really what the staff experts are here to do, is to help make sure we're compliant with the process, so that's that's a mouthful, but.
May I respond with two additional things, Mr. Smith?
But sure, I'd like to just follow up on that real quick though, the boat. Experts, armchair or whatever they are that they're putting on staff is beginning to cost the county. In other areas, not just financial, but it's costing them on other projects that need to move forward here, so. This this thing is kind of blowing up for staff and. Bill Hulse told me the other day that just dealing with Mr. Love and this uh the gentleman that was here earlier, Dave. Is eating up about eighty percent of this time for a staff member that's supposed to be doing his job of inspection. Other things for this county, so it also needs to be kept in mind up here that. Our our decisions are putting a huge burden on load on staff down below. The actions that we're taking, so yes.
Thank thank you, Mr. Smithfield, and that was the question about, I would respectfully suggest that if you're having communications. With staff, they should not be one on one, this is an administrative proceeding that should be handled i- in public, so. Or if you're gonna have communications, I would hope it would be in writing or in a public forum uh to protect yourselves from. And the second thing is, I I don't wanna sound like threatening, but you ask what the liability to the county is, at some point. If the county violates its the vested and and the property rights of my clients and does it to such an extent. That it constitutes what's known as a temporary total taking, regulatory taking, either temporary or permanent. Then the damages could be the lost value of this project and that could be a number that would make the Twilla case look uh small. Again, I I'm not trying to threaten that. You know, I'm sorry you took it that way, because I I was, I I don't think Mr. Smithfield did.
Kevin, so so I I wanted to follow up, but I I think Bill's specific question was about liability, if I understood you correctly. One, one, maybe of the few sources of liability is if if this goes to like an ombudsman decision and we disagree with it. And then it, you know, goes to court and we turn out to be wrong, then there's some liability there, right?
The base, the goal is, so we we have the, you know, it's five oh, five oh six as the measures, we have that. If we're if we're diligently continuing through and processing this and selecting good good bases for the. For the areas of mitigation that we find cannot be mitigated, again, mitigation is not elimination. If we had factors like that, then yeah, the county can uh can rely on those, it gets harder and harder though. And again, I'm not trying to put staff juxtaposed, they're trying to do their job, but if we if we don't have good. Evidentiary foundation or good basis, I think we have to be very, the commissioners have to be very careful because. This is an exceptionally unpopular, I'm not saying it's exceptionally unpopular, exceptionally unpopular project, we all understand that. But we have parameters that we have to follow, and that's that's where, just because we don't like it, is can't be the basis as to why we're denying it. What I'm encouraging you to do, out of the emails that you guys have had, I would focus on things that you're like, look, oh, I I don't know much about. Uh this water quality survey or whatever it may be, reach out to Dan, reach out to Lisa and say, hey, have we vetted this issue, have we gone through this issue? That's where the conversation should be focused on particular items that are failing to meet this this sufficiency standards that are set out. That's that's my recommendation.
I guess Trish.
That being said, and I appreciate that comment, that being said, I don't feel like this decision should be made tonight. I think, and then one thing I'll state and I'll say clear clearly to you, we represent this community, that's our job. And I yet have one individual come to me and say that they're in support of this, so that being said, it is behooves us. To do our due diligence of this study to make sure that we're making the right decision, and I don't think we have enough information tonight to make that decision. That's my opinion.
So I'm not expecting you to be.
I agree with what Chris said, Trish said, that uh most of the emails we've gotten has been public climate. Just like a couple of them tonight, we're we're basically the heart not liking this project. Which we cannot take into account, but some of the emails I've read. Are have these, they have done some incredible research, have spent. Hours and hours of their time going through documents and reading legal cases like the Springdale one. Uh so I agree with Trish, it needs to uh be postponed. And I agree with Bill on the fact that I'm really sad that our staff is under so much pressure. I mean, they're under pressure even when we don't have something like this, it's a big job. But I don't think the pressure's going to stop no matter what we do with the C U P, the pressure's going to stay on our staff. For this entire time, so it might behoove us to look at the staffing in the planning department and the building department. To how to help them navigate this very, very difficult time that we all face.
I agree with that, I so.
So that being said, I would like to make a motion that we postpone this decision and use the. Ripcord so that we can uh bring it back up on the first meeting in May.
Um I mean, I I agree we should make a decision tonight, but I don't wanna cut the discussion short, especially when we have Bruce here. Um so, but but I think if if we were to vote on that motion, then we're done for for this evening.
We we have a motion on the table, so we.
Oh, okay, I just wanna make sure, I I I I have had a lot of things I was planning on, as you can imagine, I haven't really gotten started yet.
One thing that I would like to say is, get me square from wrong. The criteria conformance with general plan is is hard to be, that's a huge thing, so. It's hard to come up with just objective thing like it does this or doesn't do this, so that's part of the reason why uh staff. Did not make a firm recommendation prove or not prove, uh five oh six, I think the statutory thing. Does address the the criteria that can be there, and I think it specifies objectives, so. That could come into play, I don't know, um Mr. Barrett has comments that as well. Does that make sense?
Um so I I had a, just some technical questions for for Dan, I I think before I, you know, get into the the main questions. Um so I I guess I'm, this um plant, is it for a particular number of. So you you know, equivalent residential units or, I'm I'm surprised how small it is, I'm wondering whether it's scalable, are we approving. Just an arbitrary size plant or one that's a specific size, I'm also surprised it can fit inside the cave um. Do you to talk about that?
So two hundred and seventy thousand G P D design capacity is, uh I think. Almost double what what the estimated sewage flow from. The current proposal is, part of it depends on the nature of non-residential stuff, but if you just look at the. If you just look at the number of residences, five hundred and some or whatever, uh that design loading would be about. Half what plant design capacity is, um so. I do believe it's scalable, uh the the space may be an issue, but typically with wastewater treatment plants, um. They're very modular in the sense of, you know, you have a certain treatment process and then there's a. You know, you can you can split your header, you can have a manifold, if you will, that goes through parallel systems, picks back up at the end, so I would think that that's a. Scalable upgrade, um but I did ask that question about the about the design capacity and that's why we added that in there.
Okay, but with that, you know, so so the 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 number in the plan is a very large number that would handle. You know, sort of the maximal anticipated development, and yet it still is, would fit in in inside the cave, is that correct?
I have not seen detailed drawings of the plant itself, that's not really our purview, but yeah, I think it's a. It's fairly new technology uh that they're using, it's very automated. A- as an example comparison wise, the the Moa Valley Plant right now, the city operates, it's two million gallons of bay. Design capacity plant, so this would be one of that in terms of capacity.
Yeah, and one of the conditions we we did lay out there for um for approval would be that. The certificate of occupancy would be dependent for any of the development would be dependent on, you know, the ultimate approval of the. Of the sewage treatment plant, so I I would think, you know, within our conditions, we could, we could explicitly say. That the sewage treatment plant must be contained within that, you know, that cave location, I guess, it's. That there's, there would be no way that they could have approval if it was spilling outside of that.
Another thing to consider is that, you know, the the plant reaches its capacity, then then there's no longer. Service that can be provided to any new development, so it's it, it's a. Yeah, I mean, basically, we won't issue any further building permits or development permits if the plant was at a capacity issue. So that would be the, that would be the fail safe.
I had a some questions kind of back to some of the liability sort of stuff, um and in terms of. Uh the body politic uh that is the district, if they fund this to get built, then it becomes operational and that. Heaven forbid, you know, something happens and they're not around anymore, um because such like a private. Uh group, who would be left to operate the system, does that make sense? I mean, I the the body politic is assigned, I forget their acronym, the the. No, the uh the Utah.
Division of Public Utilities.
Yeah, they don't have any financial skin in the game, right, they're just handling minutes and posting whatever. And so, I mean, you see where I'm gonna kind of go, and so I think you answered my question that if. Suddenly they decide it's a poor investment and they don't wanna mess with sewer treatment anymore, it's on the taxpayers here.
The goals for them to become to raise their own funds and be self sustaining. I I don't know how often they they fail, if they do fail.
Yeah, I think I I think because the the body politic, the district itself is a unique uh makeup. It kind of adds more questions to me, I think, you know, the courthouse wash wastewater treatment on the north side of the river. You know, they have a very formal agreement, we all know it's a delighted day that if um. They stop running it for whatever, then it's the county's baby at that point, so.
Yeah, I I wanna clarify too, because when I asked Stephen the question about our liability, his answer is what I was looking for. I I realize that we get a lot of emails here and that we're responsible to. Our constituents in this county, but this county is very broad, it's just. It's not just a couple hundred people that are constantly emailing in here, it's the entire county, and when we make a choice. To put this county in extreme liability with our decisions, it's affecting every single resident and that that. That has to be considered in both decisions that we're making, whether today or when we have our special session or the. The next mission meeting, the liability that we are putting our entire county under with our decisions.
Yeah, um yeah, so I guess I was just gonna transition to remarks, though some of them are maybe implicit questions, so. Dan or Lisa or Bruce, you know, gonna chime in, um. Please, please do, um one, I I, you know, before getting into specifics of this, um. You know, this, the overall Kane Creek proposal is is kind of large and complex, you know, I think by a. Very large margin, bigger than anything the county's ever considered before, so I think that size makes it difficult, it's not a good. Um fit for the procedures in our land use code, but but also the fact that there are these interrelated. Uh procedures, there's a preliminary plat coming up, there's this, you know, conditional use permit for the sewer. There's gonna be some discussion about, you know, what the correct zoning there, and all of these are interrelated, they can't really be answered. Independently, um so I I think that, I I guess I'm looking for, and I don't think, you know, the. And yeah, you know, I think we do have to have focused discussions on on particular aspects of this, um but I I guess I am looking for ways. And maybe Stephen will have some ideas that, you know, making it, like like it would be, it would be silly to to build a plant if. If the rest of the development wasn't gonna happen or wasn't gonna happen at nearly the scale uh that's being proposed. And if we could somehow say, well, this is contingent on, you know, the preliminary plat getting improved or something like that, or we, you know, should, you know. Those those types of things, I I think also, um. You know, to to tie in with the, there are there are disputes about what the correct zoning is out there, and I know that this will be a conditional use in, you know, either ranging grazing or highway commercial. But the, you know, the the stuff that that's it's intended to serve is very much dependent on zoning determinations. And it can, uh so so I guess I'm, it's more just sort of an open and a question for the future, you know, how how can we construct structure these decisions? So that we can make progress and focus on particular aspects, but don't, um you know, start. Do doing something that won't make sense in in light of, you know, how how another process turns out, um.
Did you have some, so I think it it's interesting that that Mr. Barrett, correct me if I misstated anything. Uh it's an interesting circumstance, because my understanding is the ownership of parcels of land where the water treatment facility is a different owner. Than the Kate Springs Development, and that complicates or puts a wrinkle in, because theoretically, we could. They could, one, basically looking at two individuals, even though we all know that they're kind of the same individual, one individual is asking us to put a water treatment facility plant up. And and that's what they're asking, they're they're saying, hey, we want you to consider C U P, this specific use, just because we created that doesn't necessarily guarantee. That the next piece is going to come, they're coming to us in different pieces, and so in a perfect world, you'd be able to say. Uh but we don't want, we don't want this if it's gonna cause that, but based on how how the uh. How the C U P process is created, it's hard to look at the ripple effect. Throw the stone in and we're looking at things adjacent to it, or we're looking at the entire lake, and so that's that's the hard thing that we're kind of looking at. The effects, but I don't know that we can. Uh hinder or to make this C U P contingent on another person, another part down the way. I I I think that may be a key factor.
But again, you know, just to take an artificial situation, you know, suppose that there's some chunk of land out there and someone. You know, wants to build a wastewater treatment plant enough to handle five hundred homes, and and there's and there's no proposal to build five hundred homes, they just would. Like to have the capacity, just for the fun of it, you know, maybe they're a, you know, an enthusiast for, you know, different. I I mean, I I think it would be a little bit weird for the, on the other hand, they might be proving that, so then, and then when they request to build. You know, five hundred home terms along, they said, look, we've already put all this money into the, you know, you can't tell, say no to us now. Uh I I think this sort of, you know, incrementalism in the decisions is is a problem, I and and just to, my original remark, it wasn't. I wasn't, um going back to what I said earlier on, um. You know, the, you know, the the large, you know, first order versus second order effects, that's not what I was talking about there. I'm just saying that there's some uncertainty about what scale of development is actually going to happen, and I'm. It it seems a little bit odd to me to alter. And I'm, it it seems a little bit odd to me to alter eyes like a very large sewage treatment plant without it, you know, it having sewage treat yet.
Can I respond to that as well? So the answer, we were told by the county that we had to do this first. The county said, we won't process your preliminary plat until you solve your sewer solution. So you set a hurdle. We came to jump the hurdle, and now you're telling us that we needed to jump the second hurdle before we jumped the first hurdle. The county told us we had to jump the first hurdle first. There there's a reason these are incremental, and that is because that's the way your code is written for them to be incremental, and we are simply doing what your staff told us to do under your codes.
Yeah, and and I understand that, and so and I wasn't meaning to say that, no, this is out of, I wasn't arguing about the order. But it it would be something like, okay, we're gonna, we approve this CUP on the condition that the preliminary plat also gets approved later down the road. So, you know, we've we've got.
How's that related to a reasonably anticipated detriment?
Yeah, well, that that's that's my question.
I I think it's I think it's harder, especially how they were intelligent, the way that they have uh applied to the CUP versus the development. You can't make a contingent on, we're making it, not only would we be making it on the subsequent development, we'll be making conditional on action of a third party. Because again, we're dealing with different entities. And and so, yeah, could somebody theoretically go build, so here's, you know, kind of a drawdown. We approved that to make this big sewage treatment facility, I don't know the number off the top of my head, let's say holds fifty thousand, whatever it is. And subsequently, we look at it and we pass, or they come back and say, hey, we want to build fifty thousand homes. And if there is basis to not allow them to build fifty thousand homes, we could utilize that basis. The mere fact that they have a sewage treatment facility that exists, they could satisfy or provide for that number doesn't necessarily guarantee that that because, one, they can't, I think it'd be more difficult for them to argue in taking because they're two different hats, they can't have it both ways. Because they're different entities.
Chairman, can I go back and address Mr. Clapper's issue about?
Let me actually, Mike set his hand up for a while.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't notice, I thought it was just a feature, I thought it was just a feature of your hand.
I in reading through their staff report extensively here, uh, we as a county set goalposts. What goalposts from in the staff report were not met?
I mean, I think this is the the gist of everything is that, like, why I advocate so much for taking a real close, good, comprehensive look at our future land use and our land use element of our general plan and making sure that the land use code is doing a good job at at making sure that we have the, you know, development that's gonna serve the community, that's gonna be responsible and all these different things that we value. Right now, I think we're coming kind of finding out, like, it's currently written, it's not necessarily set up to do that in this instance, especially with the highway commercial zoning being where it is in that on those properties allegedly, like, based on our past zoning maps that we've had. Um, that we're, you know, that we've been utilizing, um. I just think it's it's this is a it's a conundrum that we're, you know, we can maybe learn from it, but I don't know how much, like, as staff, and we have to look at the code and what is written in the code and go by that. We don't have the ability to just subjectively, you know, say, well, we don't like this or that, so we're gonna, you know, we're gonna recommend something different. We have to treat everything equally. And this this is our interpretation, and the staff report represents our interpretation of how this project either complies or doesn't comply. And they're they're really in our, you know, ultimately, like I said before, there's not a lot of wiggle room in terms of finding that we found, we haven't been able to find reasonable impacts or things that aren't consistent enough to deny the CUP. But I mean, there could be I I think it could be still something to a discussion to have, you know.
I understand.
Yeah.
I very much know you have to under or read through it, follow uh what you're dealt with. It's our our ability to interpret with opinion. But uh, there was nothing uh you could find that there was an exact call out, like this wall had to be three foot, it's going to be two foot.
Oh, no, not no, like little technical things like that at all, like or big technical things even. Um, I mean, you know, there's been a lot of discussion from the public about the floodplain levels and whether or not this, you know, the equalization tank is within the parameters of our ordinance for um critical facilities, but I mean, it would, I think our interpretation is it would be in a court situation, it would be really hard to prove otherwise. That's what we're always looking at, like, if we we don't want the county, we don't want to lead the county into a a scenario where um, we've said something that, you know, could put the county in jeopardy in terms of liability, and so we always have to think, okay, if this was in court, how how would this stand up? So we have to interpret it based on the basic.
Don't be, you, thank you.
Yeah.
Kevin, the floor, but before I do that, how are you feeling, Lisa? You you?
I'm okay.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to call for a vote on the motion.
I've been doing that a lot, so. You're geared up for this.
Chairman, could I respond briefly to Mr. Clapper's very question about?
Sure, then I'll.
It'll be just, it'll be very brief. Uh, I don't believe we could speculate as to what might happen. If if in the future, the district doesn't operate, and I I don't believe there's any reasonable way that the responsibility for operating the plant would wind up defaulting to the county. Uh, the normal, and again, I'm I'm way out of my range here, but I have looked at this issue before. If a public district like this somehow can't meet its obligations, it files, I believe, what's known as Chapter ten bankruptcy proceedings, in which case the bankruptcy court would take it over and would essentially require everybody who is using the facility to pay what it takes to make it run. Uh, I I believe I'm right about that. I'm about ninety eight percent certain that I'm right, although I'm way stretching my field of expertise.
Okay, uh, Kevin. Um, yeah, so I guess I I wanted to return to, um, you know, we all agree that one of the important words here is effects, what counts as the effects. Um, I I I and and this, and I think a lot of the things I'm talking about are going to be maybe requests for either the county attorney or planning staff for to have more information available at a future meeting. Vote on this. Um, I it it seems, you know, it seems to me that this, you know, the large all the development is an effect of this of the sewer plant. You know, if the sewer plant doesn't happen, then large scale development doesn't happen. If the sewer plant does happen, then it's likely to happen. And so, I mean, that that seems super straightforward to me. Uh, I know Bruce said that there were four, you know, an effect of the plant somehow implies that it's only the, you know, direct short range effects, not longer. But um, I don't think it, it seems like in other cases in land use code and CUPs arguing that they look at things like traffic, and so I I I would like to look at that more closely, and and I think that that's kind of crucial. I'll 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 admit that if we only look at, you know, the water coming out of this thing and light and noise caused by it, you know, there aren't a lot of effects to be mitigated, so it that seems like a key question, and so I'm hoping we can have a detailed discussion of that in in the future. So and and I think a second reason that um that's an important effect to consider is and again, I I don't want to, I, you know, I'm, you know, we we remind ourselves every few minutes that, you know, this is a CUP, and we can only, you know, deny it on these very narrow grounds, and and I'm I'm aware of that. But I I do think that these, you know, considering, you know, all effects, not just short inch effects of this, is important be because of the way that past county commissions have treated uh zoning. You know, we we're all familiar with history that the the way that, you know, some portion of this property got zoned, you know, the zoning changed from grazing to commercial was because a past county commission wanted to allow a campground. And at that, you know, if you look at the minutes for the meeting there, it's a lot of interesting things in the minutes, but, you know, one of them is a few people said, well, gee, you know, what if this, you know, this is zoning for this other thing, and I think, you know, in this modern county commission, we would have also, yeah, of course, we're not gonna you know, change the zoning to highway commercial just because we want to allow this one narrow thing, we would only want to do that if we were prepared for a full range of uses, but clearly our predecessors did not think that way. Why didn't they think that way? I think it's because they understood this this was a very difficult to develop area. If you, again, look at the minutes from nineteen ninety two, there's all this, you know, it was basically debate about whether to bring porta potties in. They were very aware that there was not sewage treatment there. And and I think, you know, you you can find a few other places in the county where I think from our modern point of view, this sort of very permissive highway commercial zoning has been tossed out, and that seems very reckless to us, but I I guess what I'm saying, it was, it's not quite as reckless as we think, because they understood that there were these natural limitations in terms of water and sewage and things like that. And specifically that, you know, major utilities are not a permitted use in the zone. They're conditional use, and of course, the meaning of conditional use has shifted over the years, ninety two is before a lot of the important, you know, Supreme Court cases about uses, but but I I I guess the point of all that is you know, this this is this effect, you know, is some if you had said to a county commissioner, you know, thirty years ago, that, hey, you know, if you prove this, you're gonna have five hundred homes out there, they would have laughed at you, ha, 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 they would never put five hundred tons up there. And that's because, you know, they didn't think that someone was gonna build a whole wastewater treatment plant, that's that building that, and so the fact that that wastewater treatment plant enables all this other development is is very relevant. Um, and so I I that's just sort of a a soft, I mean, my main argument that we should consider all the effects is that, you know, effects are effects, you know. And it doesn't say, you know, it should be construed narrowly, but but a, you know, a secondary argument is that this viewing the effects in this larger context, I think, is is compatible with the way zoning decisions have been handled in this county for a long time. So I have more to say about other topics, but I want to pause to give other people a chance to talk.
Yeah.
I I also uh don't want to make this super long, but um I feel like this is kind of like the first useful kind of conversation we've had around this, and I think that, um, you know, I was kind of expecting more coming up and to kind of have be teed up for the discussion a little more, I mean, kind of back to my earlier questions, I'm I'm kind of in the habit of like being presented with like, this is a recommendation, this is what we should do. And I think that, um, I know that because it is so kind of all over the place, you know, we didn't get a clear thing from the staff, which is understandable, but I think some of the other like nuances that that I'm kind of struggling with are kind of worse with the legality stuff. And so, uh, another one that I think that hasn't come up since public comment or citizen comment at the beginning was uh the question of the water rights. And so if there's these multiple entities, is it the potential development that has the water rights, or is it the wastewater treatment that has the water rights? Do you know that, Steve? Yeah, and then. And then just the fact that they're being contested or or, um, that's that's a big thing for me, like, I think that it would be irresponsible to approve uh a treatment plant that has questionable access to water.
Can I respond to that? Because this is not easy.
Yeah, yeah, go. I think the point for me is that, um, I'm wondering if, it sounds like there's, there is a motion on the table to postpone this. And I'm wondering if it's worth uh bringing in some specialists, because we obviously they have a very strong specialist on the other side of the table that's, you know, threatening us with a bunch of millions of dollars coming out. And so I think if it would have been prudent to, um, uh, I I wouldn't even know the title for, um, you know, somebody that land use law or whatever it is, that, um, I think we're gonna be sued one way or another, whether it's from these citizen groups that are ponying up or whether it's, you know, somebody that doesn't like the way it goes, so.
A lot of the difficulty with the conversation that we're having is putting cards on the table, our experts are recommending the the commission for this. It gets harder and harder to justify not. So the reason why you don't have staff coming out and saying, here's our recommendation, is because I I think there's, and it's easy to see, easy to see this is not a popular thing, and so you're seeing staff respond by saying we don't want to say what this is.
Yeah, I'm not even talking about like whether it's popular or not, it's like, we have very specific questions about like, oh, there's this water rights question that's in the courts, the feds are fighting it, Potash is fighting it, like, what does that mean if we say, yeah, you can approve this without? And that's the kind of counsel I'm looking for, I'm not looking for like heartstrings.
Sure.
I think that there's gonna be more nuanced questions with that, because I don't believe this is in line with our general plan. And that's kind of been identified as a condition to deny, and it's like, you know, if that's where we're going, how do we make that defensible? And so that's the 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 law kind of questions that I have.
And I, yeah, I would support that idea of bringing in a land use expert as far as counsel, I think that would that would help this situation.
And we've already, we've already had that as a conditional use permit.
Sure.
And we have additional questions, I have more than half a minute to answer questions. We haven't had, I reached out to commissioners, we haven't had any of these questions until the last minute. And so I appreciate commissioners reaching out, I appreciate your concerns. There should be a question that anybody pitched to me to say, hey, will you look at this? I've never declined to do that.
And I recognize that, and it goes back to Laurel's comments earlier, you know, the the packet comes out on Friday. Oftentimes, I'm kind of expecting, you know, a, you know, a a more robust sort of packet, and so same sort of thing, you know, read it over the weekend, I don't want to call, I I know you're willing, but I don't want to call you on a Sunday at ten o'clock at night and say, oh, what what about this, what about that, you know?
We have those conversations with other commissioners, I would encourage you to reach out to me.
May I respond about the water rights?
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I'll be brief, Mr. Clapper, the whether there are water rights or not, that is not an issue for the conditional use permit, except to make it a condition of the conditional use permit that water rights be uh valid. Uh, we don't intend to use any nonvalid water rights, but it what what everybody always does in these kinds of things is throw up all of these private disputes and say, there's so much spaghetti on the wall, we can't do anything. That's not how it works, it's an incremental process, and you make a condition that says to the extent that this plant requires water rights, before you get a certificate of occupancy, you gotta prove that the water rights are valid under applicable law.
Yeah, I think, and and to your point, I that's kind of what I was expecting to have in the packet.
You you won't have that, because people are fighting about them now.
No, but I mean, you're you're listing some great conditions, and I hope we're capturing these in the minutes, you know, because uh, you know, you're like, have a condition about the road, have a condition about the water rights, have the, and and I didn't see all that in our packet.
And Mr. Commissioner, that's the reason that we have these meetings is so that we can precisely discuss what conditions can be proposed or imposed uh to mitigate any reasonably, and that's that's the whole purpose of a conditional use period. Excuse me, conditional use permit hearing. You raise an issue, I'll deal with it.
Yeah, but I don't necessarily want to take a bunch of counsel from just the applicant we have, so, you know, so that's where I'm coming from with, you know, having our team really dialed in so that we have uh good conditions in place so that, you know, we can move forward and get, you know, things out and out in the open and not be vague and, you know, clean things up.
I mean, in some ways, it sounds like you've already made your decision and you're just looking for grounds to justify it.
Well, I I said, I don't feel that it's in line with the the general plan, and that's a huge thing for me.
Um, I would, I'd like to, we have, we do have a motion on the table, I'd like to kind of wrap this up unless someone thinks they have a lot more they'd like to bring up, that we also have a citizens to be heard session that's half an hour overdue.
Well, I I mean, I do, I do if we, if this is gonna come back before us, it needs to come back, you know, addressing, you know, I don't want to you know, if there's a concern someone has now, it makes sense to get it out so that staff can can address it, so I I don't think we should cut things short, because that would be very awkward.
The other thing we could do is some of these issues could have been passed forward to our council so that he had these issues, he had time to help us address them. That's really what a lot of this is, is that we need some legal advice, but yet we're bypassing, we have the budget, or excuse me, the agenda, like we all did, and he wasn't consulted about this, so why not pass some of these concerns to legal?
Well, that's kind of what I'm doing, I'm I'm saying, I like, my previous comment was that here is a legal concern, Keith, Stephen, please address this next meeting.
These all could have come forward this meeting.
So, I mean, a lot of this is just coming up as we're as we're talking right now, too. So I do appreciate the I mean, if you're not, I I do, Stephen and I do chat, you know.
And the African asked us to do it all in a public meeting. He said, don't talk to staff without, you know.
No, that's not, that's not quite what I said.
Okay, I I take it back. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, well, let me, I go, I wanna, it is six thirty. Let me, uh, let me do our citizens to be heard session really quick and then get back to this. Okay. So I would uh, no, I'm gonna come. I'm just gonna do a quick citizens to be heard. We have six o'clock session. I think there may be a few people here that are here for that, and I'll I'll come right back to to where we're at. So, uh, anybody here who would like to be heard on this topic who's sitting in the chambers right now? And anyone online? Is there anyone online? Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. Let me clarify that. Yeah, uh, any any citizen to be heard on any topic? Yes, of course. So, still waiting for Yeah, yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, nothing, no one wants to
I've had bad experiences with
Right, yeah. Should we maybe just talk a little bit more and then come back to?
If 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 possible, I would like to just address what Evan was concerned about with the with the water rights and why we didn't explicitly put that as a condition of approval is because it's really out of our purview. The division of water, of drinking water, um, is also the the water rights people in the state. So they would not issue an operating agreement for this, for the public services, uh, facility if there weren't water rights that were uh, approved or the property owner. So it really wasn't, it's not really our planning and zoning, like land use code purviews. That's why it wasn't explicitly as a condition, but it would definitely be embedded in the process with the state approvals. Just to clarify that.
Evan. Yeah, so I guess I wanted to, you know, say something more about the, you know, reasonably anticipated detrimental effects. Um, you know, if we if we do decide ultimately that, you know, effects means, you know, all effects rather than just some of the effects, then, you know, we've got this section nine ten five in in our land use code. And and it and and so unless, you know, unless we are quite sure that effects can only mean narrow effects, it would be great at the next meeting if there was some analysis of of whether effects are valid. I I think a lot of it it does, uh, you know, like item A says, you know, cause substantial permanent interference of the right to peaceful enjoyment of property. It looked, I looked on staff report like you were limiting that to private property, but I I read that as, you know, any property and you know, an important adjacent property or public lands around there. Um, so that's I did read that as private property. Okay, right, and I Yeah, so so I I I think there, you know, if there are legal interprets issues of legal interpretation that we can't resolve, it might be good to have, you know, alternate language like uh, so that we don't have to make it up on the spot at the next meeting, um. And and I think, you know, B, C, D, and E, all all again, if we are considering all effects, um, we could argue that there are detrimental effects, and for the most part, I think they're they're hard to mitigate just because it's essential to the project to change change the landscape by quite a bit to have a lot of traffic, that a lot of people living there. Um, one thing I I did wanna, you know, this is a little bit more narrow and technical, but, um, item D talks about im- impacts on public infrastructure. And I think it mentioned fire, um. And other land approvals in the county, you know, we we have, I think it's still on our books, a limit to the number of houses that can be on a cul-de-sac. And and I my understanding is that limitation was was because of fire issues. You don't want to have basically, you know, a lot of houses. There's only one way to get in there. Um, and I I think effectively this thing is is a big cul-de-sac. Um, you know, especially with the road narrow. So that's some, you know, I I just wanted to throw that on the table. This may be something staff can think, you know, is that you know, it's a it's a possible effect. It's hard to mediate unless unless we've made the road quite a bit wider. And then finally, and and I I think this this is the, I I touched on this before, but I I think it is the most important, this, um, section four oh six that says, you know, public utilities like this have to be compatible with the general plan. I it would be great if people could in planning, if they want to, to take a a very close look at that. I mean, I I think if you showed a bunch of people, here's our general plan. You know, here's what's being proposed. Are they compatible? Almost everybody would say no. I think Bruce is gonna write us a letter about how it might, the answer might actually be yes. I would foretaste seeing that. But it it, um, it's hard for me, and I I have looked at the plan. It's it's not just one or two cent, you know, it's kind of pervade pervasive through it throughout the plan. Um, and I want to save time. I want to quote specific parts of the general plan, but I'll I'll email them to use Steve, you know, to to others to know what I'm talking about.
Sure.
When you're referring to four oh six, that's state statute. State statute, yeah. Yeah, twenty twenty seven eight four seventeen twenty seven eight seven. Um, and and then you you and and it it ties into, I think, the the beginning of section four oh five, which says that in general, you know, general plans are just advisory for the most part, and then it lists its conceptions. And this is one of them. So it's one of those rare cases where we do actually have to follow the general. Another, should I keep? Yeah, go go ahead. Please, please cut me off. Someone else who wants to speak. Yeah, but I think it's maybe just it'll be quicker if I just clear it out as much as I can. Um, but I definitely don't mind being interrupted and that, you know, from any of you. Um, another thing we we don't discuss very much is, you know, there there's this thing, well, you know, if someone submits a land use classification at time and at this, you know, then we have has to be approved, but there there's in state code, there's a very big exception for that, for, you know, compelling countervailing public interest. And, you know, I think the general feeling is that, you know, it's don't come up every day, you know, that it's a relatively rare thing. But I think the facts around this development are pretty unusual. You know, just the the history of the zoning, the scale, uh, the the nature of the area and, um, you know, it might make more sense to be discussing that if we were talking about a preliminary plat, but I I just wanted to throw that out there. But I I think that also applies to that that exception for compelling countervailing public interest also applies for conditional uses. And hopefully speeding up on these these headings, um, we've gotten quite a bit of com- comment, a lot of very technical comment on the flood hazard of the area. And and I think, you know, the main answer to that is I think for developers would be the sewage treatment plant, it's pretty high above, you know, the the flood levels, you know, that that you're gonna have to pump sewage up to, um, to minimize that that flood hazard. Um, I would, I I don't that seems kind of plausible to me, but it it I do, you know, I just looking at all these that it would be great to have a summary. I know Dan probably has too much on his plate, but, you know, I Dan is someone I would trust to say, you know, here's what one side says, here's what the other side says, we think, you know, balance, you know, this is or something like that. Maybe not get addressed.
Sure. So our flooding damage prevention ordinance or flood damage prevention ordinance says that critical facilities, and it goes on to define, those have to be outside of five hundred year flood plain. Moab's flood damage prevention ordinance does not put that the the hospital, the wastewater treatment plant, pretty much all downtown is located within five hundred year flood plain. Um, a- and we accept that as a risk. Now, that's not necessarily saying it's good over here, it's gonna be good over there. That's not necessarily a legal argument. But but that is something that's going to, you know, if that's what we're hanging our hat on, I don't know that it's very defensible. To to make the thing, the wastewater treatment plants are often located in special flood hazard areas because of the nature of them being located in valley or whatever, and having to be close to a discharge source. So the state has some pretty strict regulations about uh, in in their design of wastewater treatment plants and sewer facilities in general, uh, about if you're below, uh, I think it's eighteen inches above the base flood elevation, which would be a hundred year, then, you know, like manholes have to be sealed. It can't be open vented manholes, uh, waste lift stations, pump stations, the the city has that lift station that's back behind the Holiday Inn. Sort of in the in the archway, I can see that, but it sits up on a pedestal, kind of, it's built way up. The tanks themselves are obviously down lower, but the place where surface water could could run in infiltrate into the thing and mix is has to be, uh, I believe it's eighteen inches above that. So any kind of venting, any kind of hat, access hatch, any kind of uh, manhole lids, whatever like that, you know, is is something that would be would have to be regulated. And another thing I think to consider, um, I've gone out on a limb here a little bit coming off Stephen. But the five hundred year flood for the Colorado River Basin is something that we're gonna know about five years later. Uh, it's, it takes multiple years of above average snowfall to to generate that kind of volume in the river. It's not a, it's not a flash flood situation like Mill Creek or Pat Creek is. Um, you know, it's based on soil water content, it's based on predicted temperatures, it's based on the snowpack levels. Um, in the in the high last really high water was eight three eight four. That was a cycle where there was two successive seasons of record snowfalls, uh, that led to those. And and the second one was actually worse than the first, the eighty four versus eighty three, because in eighty three, they filled up all the reservoirs and stuff like that. And then the second year, there was no capacity for that buffering. There isn't very many large reservoirs in Colorado River Basin of stream. That that have that buffering, but it's not something that's gonna happen in the middle of the night and catch us all by surprise.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. So I'm I'm kind of, you know, so maybe I if if I it sounded like I was requesting more analysis of floodplain stuff, I I think that in, you know, the context of the CUP, I don't think that makes as much sense. Scratch that request, um. Continuing through the list, um, to me, I I guess I did have on the list, you know, making a contingent on water rights actually being there, which is, you know, I think something's being challenged now, and I understand what you're saying, that that, you know, other people handle water rights. But it's pretty routine on in other land use approvals, like, you know, like for a subdivision or like a clamping resort, you know, we often if at least in the past, we've talked about not approving them, but they can't show that they have water. Yes, until we make the can, you know, approval conditional on that that kind of thing. So it, to me, that seems like a pretty mild condition. It it seemed like Chris was even, you know, suggesting that's a very
They do have perfected water rights well on capacity of what the A looks like now. There's water rights. I think the issue is they've applied for a point of use, change of point of diversion. And that has led to people, you know, bringing up evidence that that some of the water has been disused, therefore should be forfeited. That's a adjudication issue. That's not even something that divisional water rights. Uh, so if if there's a forfeiture of water rights, that has to be No, I didn't. I didn't go into that. I mean, that's not really our problem. I mean, we can say yes, we can make a condition that says proof of adequate water rates is served well. That's certainly, that's
And and that's all I I understand. We we don't make decisions about water rights, but it, you know, if if something where they're changing theater, it might be nice to have that condition in there, so. Um, let's see, I I share, you know, Evan raised some points about, um, and and this has come up quite often that if you have a you know, there's not like a big diverse tax base, you know, backing up the operation of this sewer plant. And and certain point can find examples where things have failed, maybe it's not homes have sold things like that. Um, I don't, I don't know if we have any good options to protect the county from that. It's definitely driving this, but it might be worth at least looking into, um. So I I guess that's maybe just another request of attorney, you know, what what are our options to sort of minimize the chance counties could be on the hook for operating, you know, that it'll it'll continue to operate smoothly in the future regardless of financial up and downs of the builders.
May I give the county commissioner, there's a case called United States, uh, I'll get you the exact citation. It's a case that specifically says that District Attorney of the County has no
I and is that, I I don't, okay, so that would be no legal liability, like we can, we can just let the homeowner suffer if we want to. But, you know, politically, you know, there's gonna be calls for us to come in and not have these people, have to abandon their homes because the sewage plant isn't working anymore. And so I I guess I was worried about a comp, not not just the narrowly legal issues, but also, you know, politically, that that would be expected to come to the rescue. But but anyway, thank, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I'll forward the case.
Okay. Um, I think that might be it for now. Oh, no, I'm sorry. One, and then and then finally, um, I I do think I I think we need to take a closer look at road issues. I I think often when this comes up, it's like, okay, we'll just widen the road. If there's more development, we'll write it even more later. Um, and, you know, the one question is, you know, how, especially for the bigger widening, you know, how much is that gonna cost? Uh, and and then there's also right of way issues. There there are places where the it's not clear to me at least that the right of way is wide enough to, um, you know, widen the road to an applicable standard. And so if if things are just made conditional on, um, you know, I I think we should, you know, write it in. Um, you know, maybe it's easy, maybe it's just, you know, adding a few extra feet, you know, easily added a few extra feet, but I I do think we should pay attention to the direction.
I I did research the right of way issue a little and talked to the Alspudman's office about that. Essentially, you've got a public road that's recognized as a public road, so it has a road right of way by use. The need to meet the increase in use on that road is is something that's eligible for for eminent domain. Eminent domain in the state of Utah, part of downs, but it's not limited to public entities. Someone else could exercise eminent domain on the road to to condemn rightways.
You just, I I I not, I mean, just
It's a power statute. Powers are delegated to, it's a purpose of statute. Since you can condemn for X, Y, Z, Q, R, S, S, Y, P, N, L, it's about water companies, uh, all kinds of utilities, all kinds of entities can condemn. Specific provision code of law, remember, right, it says for byways and public thoroughfares or something. I'm getting it, I'm getting it slightly wrong. It's a very broadly construed statute regarding powers.
But but I like if I'm living on a flagpole lot and I just wanna, you know, then my neighbor to make the driveway wider, I could do that or I'm I'm confused?
It has to be a public road.
Oh, public, okay, right. Okay, but but if once it's a public road, then a- anyone can uh, like how
It is confused. I mean, I I'm passing on the information.
Okay.
When we were fighting the Buckland Highway, that was very clear. That's why they totally When we were fighting the Book Cliff Highway, that was very clear. That's why they totally changed the direction they were going to take the Book Cliff Highways because the county denied him right of way. So.
But there wasn't a previous right of way there, so.
But there was a road, a county, there was a road that people were using. So I I would.
That's a technical issue. I'm I'm, I would, if if either Dan or Bruce wanted to email me more information about that, I'd appreciate it. Did you have any, was was that, everything on your list? Does anyone else have anything they wanna add? Yeah, I favor that also. All right, um, we do have a motion on the table. I think Mary made the motion to, uh, uh, to postpone it until next meeting and Trish seconded it. Um, had a lot of discussion since then, so.
So the 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 report is the applicant demanding that, that's not us. We're we're on the the negative end of the meeting.
Yeah, a- and they've they've expressed a willingness to let us push that out for one extra day, and we appreciate that.
We'd rather do a discussion meeting, but.
Okay. I I I will say that I considered that and I did an informal poll of my fellow commissioners and it it sounded like two were certainly, uh, unavailable on the, uh, fifth Tuesday, so I, in light of that, I I my personal preference would be to push it out to the, uh, seventh, although I will be. So, um, do you wanna add that to your motion, Mary, that we are, or you already, I think that was part of your motion that we were gonna do that on the seventh of May. Right, okay, so the motion is to postpone until the regular commission meeting on the seventh of May, uh, all in favor of the motion, raise your hands. All opposed. All right, motion passes five to two, uh, Stephen.
On on that.
I'm I'm sorry, with, uh, with Bill, with, uh, Commissioner Winfield, Commissioner McCurdy.
On on that, if commissioners have individual questions, I know in the past, Commissioner Walker sent me uh, information or findings to try to get that ahead of time to look at that. Questions, reach out, all of you have my emails. Um, if you come with questions, that next meeting that we discuss this, that's that's the meeting to give. So take it upon yourself to reach out. Uh, look at everything in the pack packet. I would be shocked if everyone was very very thorough with every single part of this. It's a very complicated thing. So if you have questions for me, let me know. I'm more than happy to reach out to others, uh, other attorneys as well to help me become more educated on this, but I can't, a lot of these questions I don't want to be. So, come here.
Great, thank you for that, Stephen.
And thank you very much.
All right, uh, okay, Chris. Okay, uh, let's see, we have our next, uh, agenda item four, uh, is the resolution for the Rim Tour Adventure CUP and Elisa is presenting this one, and I believe the applicant, uh, Reed Bachin is online.
All right, so this should be pretty quick, um. We do have the applicant online. I'll just give a brief summary of the staff report, so um, the applicant is seeking approval of a conditional use permit for the purposes of operating a non ATV outfitter business at the property, specifically a mountain biking rental and guide service. The conditional use would allow equipment rentals and guide service for hiking, rafting, canyoning, biking and rock climbing per section three point two point three K one, general outfitters. So those are all of the things that would be allowed. It's not necessarily what the business is doing right now. They're just focused on biking. So the property is located in the Highway Commercial zoning district where an outfitter guide service used currently in our land use code requires a camp additional use permit. We're looking at maybe thinking about that considering something different, but for now, um, it does require the CUP, so the mountain bike rental and guide business has historically operated at this location without the CUP. Now that the property has changed ownership and the new owner has applied for a business license, the use is required to come into compliance with the land use code. Per the site plan submitted with the CUP application, there are no major improvements needed, um. Basically, the applicant does not have any outdoor storage on site. Rental bikes are stored indoors and camp outfitting gear is stored within sheds at the rear of the property. In addition, the property has an existing six foot privacy fence along the boundary of both adjacent properties to serve as additional screening. Parking areas are covered currently in gravel in order to mitigate dust and create a hardened surface for use by emergency response vehicles. The property, sorry, the proposed use is consistent with the twenty thirty general plan, um, land use section, um, as the property is within the highway mixed use land use designation on the future land use map. And as Rim Tours Mountain Bike Adventures has been a longstanding business in the community, approval of the CUP would be consistent with the general plan's economic development chapter, one of the goals, which is to foster a diverse and resilient economy by investing in existing industries and businesses while expanding our economic base. Um, staff identified minimal anticipated detrimental effects of the business in this location perceived per CUP approval criteria listed in section nine point ten point five. And to mitigate anticipated impacts of the use to neighboring properties, staff recommends the following conditions of approval. Property owner shall maintain the existing six foot privacy fence adjacent to residential dwellings. Noise from rigging and de-rigging shall be avoided outside regu- regular operating hours. Permit D owner agrees to comply with the condit- the commercial use standards set forth for non ATV outfitter guide service and facilities in the land use section three point two point three K. And that sums up my staff report for that one.
Awesome, thanks, Alyssa. Bill?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. I move to adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit for a non ATV outfitter guide service facility for Rim Tour Adventures on Grand County Parcel Number zero two dash zero 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 seven dash zero zero nine five as illustrated on site plan attached to the resolution as exhibit A. With the following conditions, in order to mitigate reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of the proposed use, one, to minimize the impact of the use to neighboring properties. The property owner shall maintain the existing six foot privacy fence adjacent to residential dwellings. Number two, noise from rigging and de-rigging shall be avoided outside regular operating hours. Number three, permit D owner agrees to comply with the commercial commercial use standard set forth for non ATV outfitter guide service and facility in land use code section three point two point three A.
Thank you, Bill. So, all right, uh, I think Kevin beat you to it, Mike, sorry. Uh, so there's a motion to approve from Commissioner Win- approve the conditions from Commissioner Winfield and a second from Commissioner Walker. Uh, I'll start the discussion off. I'm very familiar with this business, the previous owners, the current owner, and I, uh, pretty comfortable with this personally. Um, yeah, I I seem strange that we're approving this, it seemed to be on the verge of approving this CUP so easily when we've had Yeah, not other ones, but it's with the, you know, this is on Howie one ninety-one, it's a business that's been there a long time, but has recently changed ownership. Um, and it's kind of a work in our land use code that this type of business needs a conditional use permit, even though it's in the highway commercials. Yeah, yeah, I believe I think they've been in their current spot for twelve over the twenty-five years I've lived here. Haven't haven't seen much change in their business plan. They run a great business. Any other comments before I call for a vote? All right, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and the motion passes unanimously.
Six.
Yeah, I agree. I was, yeah, definitely, whereas I'm actually about to do that. So just in in light of, uh, Elisa's time, I'm gonna move, uh, agenda item six up ahead of agenda item five, uh, resolution for the final plat area crossing phase one, corrected tract E amended. And I would, uh, get that back to Elisa.
Okay, um, let's see.
I I assume you're here for that item two, Ben. Yeah, if you're welcome to come on up if you like.
I'm trying to share that. Oh, there we go. Okay. Um, okay, so the applicant is requesting approval of a plat amendment subdividing tract E of the Arroyo Crossing Phase One Corrected Final Plot located at twenty ninety-seven Golden Eagle Way within the Arroyo Crossing PUD subdivision. Tract E is identified on the phase one final plot as a future subdivision. The one point six acre parcel will be divided subdivided into twenty-seven lots averaging point zero five acre in size. The subdivision will be developed into five townhome clusters, one four unit building, one five unit building, and three six unit buildings. Subject property fronts Golden Eagle Way, a private road that is already constructed to county construction standards. No roadway improvements are required and no right of way dedication be needed. Because the subdivision has frontage on Spanish Valley Drive, the developer has been required to construct that portion of the shared use path, including a five foot easement on the west side of Spanish Valley Drive, which has been denoted on the plat via a a plat note. This easement accommodates the path's shoulder drainage and ensures a clear zone free of obstacles. So it's kind of right along here. If you can see my cursor. Um, drainage and civil plans were approved by the county engineer and sunrise engineering. All utilities, including WUSA, have a pro- provided proof of ability to serve the development. A subdivision improvements agreement and completion of assurance bond will be required to be submitted prior to the recordation of the final plot. Staff found the proposed subdivision to be in conformance with the general plan insofar as providing opportunities for affordable housing as well as promoting development patterns that support safe, effective and multimodal transportation options by providing that portion of the shared use, uh, pathway along this development's frontage of Spanish Valley Drive. Staff found that the final plot is in compliance with all other applicable sections of land use code and is recommending approval.
Thanks, Alyssa.
Do you have anything else to add? Missed anything?
Yeah, we're gonna go for help help homes, uh, at point two of the twenty-seven lots. Five of the lots, the last five plex, we're gonna do up to a hundred twenty percent, uh, so we'll be doing a little bit different for that, so. Mostly self-help, eighty percent AMI below, and then five at a little bit higher income with a financing to be determined. Um, I also had the effort, add that we're having groundbreaking on Thursday, assuming that this gets passed. Well, for skyline, conflict cottages and tracting, all will be breaking ground in some form or capacity in the next, uh, few weeks.
Thanks, Ben. Uh, Mike?
As a previous recipient, thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a motion. I move to adopt the resolution approving the final plat, Arroyo Crossing Phase One. Corrected tract E amended base, based on one of the, on the findings of fact set forth in the staff report dated January twenty ninth, twenty twenty-four, and with the following conditions, the owner shall record the SIA simultaneously with the final plat in the recorder's office and the owner shall submit a acceptable completion assurance bond for the incomplete public improvements and if instructed warranty bond for completed accepted public improvements as established in the SIA to the county in the amounts set forth in the SIA prior to the rec- recordation of the final plot.
Thanks, Mike. Second from Bill, all right, have a motion on the table from Commissioner McCurdy and a second from Commissioner Winfield to approve conditions, uh, Kevin, um, and just, I I think this is obvious, but I'll I'll just ask the question anyway, um. This really has has very little effect on any of the neighboring landowners because you own the land across the street there and it's pretty much surround, you know, it's deep within inside the development, it's not right on the edge.
I don't really understand your question. I, other than Land Trust owns the entire bunch of of that. You know, like across the street on
That's right over.
Spanish Valley Drive, that's also owned by Land Trust. It's mostly gonna be drainage, but there is a phase two that will be townhomes and attached, mostly attached dwellings.
Okay, just there there in a pre, I mean, there's been a few plat amendments here and and in one of the previous conversations, it it came, you know, with a you know, changing setbacks, you know, near adjacent with different, and I was just reassuring that none of those issues are really relevant here, that this is just a really an internal change with the development.
I think the way that this this subdivision was set up was meant to do multiple plat amendments to get asked, because this was put together as as developers were approached, Maco like myself, to do these developments, they weren't, they didn't plat certain tracks. So like across the street, phase two hasn't been platted, it has, it's just, I don't wanna clone up its base, because I know that's a vague term or whatever, but it's, it needs to be platted, so there'll be another plat amendment for that. I think this subdivision is set up to be that makes sense.
Yeah, and you are right, though, there, all of the properties surrounding, even on the sides here, are all owned by the Land Trust and are slated for, like, similar density type development, but like the areas where we would have been looking at that more would have been like on this edge, kind of over here, where it's, um, where the where the development is is bordering some of the other kind of, like, other property, private properties that aren't part of the Land Trust.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, anyone else? Calls for a vote on the motion, uh, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hands, and that passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much, Alyssa.
Yes.
I don't think you, you, uh, don't need to be around for the other couple items, right?
No, thank goodness.
Yeah, thanks for, for. We are, we're gonna get back to item number five, storm drain pipe purchase from Mountland Supply Company, uh, state contract number M A nine eight seven, this one is Dan.
Just quick synopsis, because I think I covered most of it in a separate part, but I didn't get a chance for that, um. This storm drain pipe would serve two projects, uh, the Jackson Street Storm Drain, which is outfall pipeline from the pond at the west end of, it's actually the south end of Jackson Street, but we think of it as west, because way the valley turns there, but the uphill side of the mug rim side of Jackson Street down to the creek. Um, the other project would be the one that I think Mike mentioned earlier, about the Transportation Special Service District. That is a kind of an interceptor line that goes behind the homes on the west side of desert lanes. Apparently, you know, get a lot of surface flow across them. Um, so it's basically part of, the first part of that system kind of got put in with the Mesa Development, um, or what are they called? Basis the Road, Sage Creek, plus the townhomes. This is basically extending that pipeline that's off of their property down to outfall through the damage. Um, I main rationale for doing this, instead of, I think I tried to cover pros and cons, if you have any specific questions that we stamp save significantly in sales tax revenue, contractor markup. The con really is, is we probably need to, as soon as we receive the pipe, we need to put it under our property scissors. I'm pretty sure how that works. Work that out with Mallory and but, you know, we would be subject to that, whereas typically a contractor has contractors insurance.
Bill?
I don't see a recommended motion, but I'll make one if that works.
Certainly, yeah.
I recommend that we, um, approve this purchase of thirty-three hundred and sixty feet of forty-eight inch solid pipe for a total of three hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Say that over again.
The dollar amount?
Yeah, three hundred nineteen thousand five hundred eighty-seven.
I've got eight hundred.
Oh, my letter, okay, which one is right, Dan? I mean, in the summary, it says five eighty-seven.
There's a quote in the pack, did I transpose the numbers?
Okay, so you're right there.
I'm sorry.
If I went correctly.
Okay, sorry. That was a wise move.
That's my error, sorry.
So it is three hundred nineteen thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Thank you.
For S one zero five nine one eight nine four eight.
Perfect. All right, I have a motion on the table from, uh, Commissioner Winfield and a second from Commissioner Walker to approve. Any further questions for Dan? All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your hands, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, and the next one is Dan. Also, uh, number seven, engineers design exception for the road right of way wit for a portion of the old Thompson Townsite.
So as I know that you're aware, the the Thompson Townsite has a major issue with property line boundaries not matching what's on its ground, fences and structures. And the county's been undertaking to try and help those people and rectify that. One of the issues that came up in the in the process. One of the issues that came up in the in the process of of trying to make it fit to satisfy all the. Key parties was that we needed to narrow down the roads a little bit in order to fit in like existing fence lines and stuff. Um the county does have a road standard, the county surveyor is like, we're not. I'm not deviating from our standard right away without having a formal uh commission approved. Design exception, there is a process for design exceptions outside of Spanish Valley. Um for that, so Bill and I reviewed that, looked at it. Both supportive for this particular case. I think the benefits of sorting out some of these issues. Lots different, forty eight foot wide.
It is clarification, I think you need to build Jackson.
Yes, absolutely. I understood.
I mean, I was a part of it also, but they went.
Yeah, okay. So this is kind of the next step in in drawing up the plat and starting to get people to sign. I do know that. Recently, Lucas also said that title reports will probably be necessary. Other step we'll bring to you is.
Thanks, I appreciate you putting some of the background in there about how the widths came to be regarding old uh.
And I didn't know that, actually, it's fascinating, yeah. Um but yeah, I I I think this totally makes sense when you're looking at Thompson and and trying to do a crazy replat, so. Yeah, Bill.
I'm moving to approve the engineers designed exception to throw it right away with for a portion of the old Thompson Townsite.
Thank you. Alright, uh motion from Commissioner Winfield, second from Commissioner McCurdy, any uh further discussion on this one?
Do we need any definition of where these exceptions would be applied?
Um I just said the portion of the old Thompson Townsite, because it's not the whole townsite, it's one side of the track. I don't know that there needs to be a legal description.
Uh I'm just wondering if it needs to be recorded in the future by the surveyor something. So that in the next fifty years.
So so the plat, the plat will reflect, the plat will be redrawn for that whole area and it'll show forty eight foot wide rightways.
Great, that was fine.
But I didn't give you a a legal description of the portion of the townsite that's.
No, that's uh so the plat will capture.
We're just reassuring the surveyor, whoever's drawing the plat, that this this is, we approve of this.
Right, Lucas basically said, I'm not gonna take. Go and reduce the right way with this plat below county standards. Which was good, now that's that's a proper way to do it.
Great, alright, I'll call for a vote on the motion to approve. Uh all those in favor, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. Alright, thanks, Dan. I think that uh ends uh your participation in the meeting tonight. Thanks for sticking with us. Alright, uh we are on to agenda item eight, independent contractor agreement for the twenty twenty four Grand County Fair for Atkinson Sound. And uh let's see, Angie is with us, uh our host and director. So I'll turn it over to you, Angie.
Okay, hello, um thank you guys. And so tonight I am bringing you an independent contractor's agreement for our lights and sound. For our bands for the Grand County Fair. Um so I'm requesting for a signature for Atkinson Sound. Um and this would be for um our sound engineer for our bands. Um they'll be providing all of the sound equipment and lights um for both nights. Um I could go into more detail if you guys like, but it was all there. Go ahead.
Thanks, Angie. Uh Kevin. Um I I move to approve the independent independent contractor agreement for the twenty twenty four Grand County Fair. For Atkinson Sound in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh with following condition, um approval from legal on the independent contractor agreement. Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot, um it's actually been approved, um that was, that was supposed to be updated, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so let me amend what I said to to drop the condition, just. Great, got it. Thank you, and second from Mike, um. Any further questions or discussion?
Uh I was just curious what made you choose them over a stage for you?
Um it was due to equipment and experience and the overall. Um. Experience and just. The level of. Quality that we're looking for and that we're needing from the bands. Yeah.
Great, thanks. Anyone else? Call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hands and that passes unanimously. Alright, thanks, Angie.
Thank you.
Um on to uh agenda item nine, Grand County Attorney Cola Ordinance. And this one is is Renee on to. Great, yeah, go ahead.
I feel comfortable making a motion.
Great.
I move to approve the ordinance establishing and affixing the salaries of the elected county attorney.
Thank you. Second for Bill. Alright, any further discussion?
Like to just make a comment?
Yes.
Um I just kinda wanna revisit more for public record, just to revisit this discussion that happened in late November. Um and I'm just kind of actually pulling off of uh some article from the T I. So the commission agreed November twenty eighth to grant a two, three point two cost of living adjustment to all county employees. But entered the final budget meeting of the year undecided about whether elected officials should receive the same boost. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, I promise. While commissioners agreed that the sheriff should receive this adjustment, Winfield and McCurdy said they would prefer not to receive the adjustment. And acknowledgement of reports that businesses in the community were struggling. And a trend they connect to the commission's decision to decrease spending and promotional advertising. Um county attorney Stephen Stox requested to re- waive his cola and apply the difference to his office training. And membership fund, and this is in quotes, I'm asking to cut my cola to give my budget more money for the office staff, he said. So I guess the only reason I'm bringing it up, and I think in the end of all of that discussion, I'm the only county commissioner that did not take my cola. Tell me if I'm wrong. And and so I, this just stuck in my craw. You know, I just think if people say something, they should follow through with that. I'm an action person, not a, not a. You know, just somebody talks the talk, I walk the walk. So just wanted to revisit that discussion. It's been stuck in my craw for some time now.
Um Mike, let's see, Mike can stand up first, then I'll get back to you, Kevin.
Feels like a different subject here.
Not really. No.
My house was voted down, so.
Um I I I do, you know. I thi- I think I disagree with um so- some of the characteristics that Chris gave, especially I think the situation of the county attorney was different. He just wanted to, you know, rearrange the budget without doing it, we disagreed, and so, you know, we're just doing. I don't know, so I I, to me, that some of those issues aren't either, are not relevant in this case. Bill?
Yeah, it was, just because it was in the T I number one doesn't mean that it was correct. The vote was.
Well, the vote, vote actually in the T I went wrong. The vote was wrong.
Those got the floor.
Thank you. We were voting as body to either accept the cola or turn the cola down at the commission. It was overvoted, Mike and I were the only two.
That's actually wrong. It was actually a three.
Thank you. Again, do I get to speak or you can get your head over the top?
Go ahead, Bill, you have the thank you.
It's commendable that you turned down the call. It's very commendable, whether or not it's, yeah, it's, we don't even need to know why you turned it down. This was voted on as a body. If we had any idea, we'd probably walked in and turned it down as well too, if we were looking for an outcome. We were looking to make a statement to the entire community. That as a body, that we were not going to impose on them, increase some, increase taxes. Which is what we were, we ended up voting to do. Everybody else other than the three of us. Voted to include the call of four. It did so, and what this has to do with the county attorney makes no sense. And it doesn't even, it doesn't even fly. I'm sorry, you play off base here. And you're just making certain you're known publicly.
I'm gonna, Trish, Bill's got the floor. I'm gonna give, alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Let me, let me give Mary a comment and then I'm gonna call for a vote, because I think we're getting sideways to make actual issue here.
Just a correction, we weren't voting on a tax increase. We were voting to accept the cola. It had nothing to do with taxes. Taxes are set according to our budget.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote on the county attorneys, uh on the county attorney. Attorney Cola Ordinance, uh the motion is made by Commissioner Clappard, seconded by Commissioner Winfield. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. All those opposed. Motion passed six to one with Commissioner Hadeen in opposition. Um on to agenda item ten, engagement letter with Larson Certified Public Accountants for audit of twenty twenty three financials. This one goes to our clerk auditor, Gabe Waitock.
Thanks, Jac. Alright, so the engagement letter uh that's in the packet was what was presented to Larson, by Larson. Uh for for the work um auditing the county's uh books for the year ending. On December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Uh this is a standard engagement letter, the material, I I sort of carefully compared it with previous engagement letters and. And found no material difference um from those engagement letters that were previously agreed upon. That being said, um during the in-person portion of the audit process that was completed last week by Larson C P A. During that week of April eight, I I did um sort of speak with John Hatterley, the head C P A of Larson Networks. Uh uh our case, uh sort of his intention of redrafting the financial statements. But that'll be presented to management for approval. Uh and so I guess, even though that isn't necessarily highlighted or specifically articulated in this engagement letter, it does exist. Um sort of, and I and I think that it came to light that that might not have been, that, you know, that there were inconsistencies. Or errors in financial statements as previously drafted it uh as a result of previous engagement letters. Uh so, you know, I I think that uh Larson C P A is a highly respected firm. Uh as is John Hatterley, is a professional in 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 the field. Amongst people in the state auditors across the state, um the state auditor's office included. And so I I I think it's perfectly reasonable to to expect that he's willing to follow through on the commitments to. Uh redraft financial statements from scratch, uh and then and for, and additionally, I would say that. Uh more active guidance um sought by my office from our hired consulting accountants. That we have with Squire Consultants uh to review those statements for accuracy. As well as a presentation of those statements for review by you all. Um and just sort of an extra added focus and intent behind the review of those statements. That will be presented for the uh this year, I think, uh would certainly be in order. This is the third of three quoted years that we have in the engagement agreement with Larson C P A. There's not like a. There's not like an independent contractor agreement with a with an external auditor in this case, because we don't agree. We don't, we don't set a contracted agreement with them for a product, right? It's uh that would sort of take away the impartiality of what we're sort of in agreement with them for. Uh so but there is a, as part of the engagement agreement that we initially sort of approved with them, they offered. Uh sort of quotes uh concluding in this year's engagement letter. So I think if we were to proceed with them following this year, I think that there would be uh another process, uh another. Uh you know, whether that went out to date, I I think that we would probably seek that sort of recourse and and we'll uh. Pursue that that process this year. And then one other thing I did, I did um mention, I did want to mention. Is that um commissioners uh that are liaisons with special service districts that that need to, that are required to. Have a external audit completed, should please do everything they can to spur on the completion of those external audits. Because those are considered component units by our external auditor and thus. Uh their ability to sort of complete and finalize the audit and present us these financial statements for review, for review. Uh hinge upon uh the completion of the audit by uh our our component units. So I can follow up on that some more too, particularly if there are a couple of those special service districts that have been holding things up. I think there are a couple.
It'd be great if you could send us a follow-up email.
Okay, that's because I know student districts and they're trying to spend our good best they can.
Yes, absolutely, that'd be great. So so Gabe, may maybe you already said this, but could you put on the calendar? Um like for for next, you know, I I just think we should have a, you know, either a full commission discussion or audit committee discussion about, you know, do we want to continue? Beyond this third year with with Larson. And it seemed, you know, we did see this letter before the audit committee, but at that point, it was kind of, I think, too late to. You know, it would have been very awkward if to go with any accountants other than these. So I just want to make sure that for next year. We can have a, you know, full discussion, time to think about it, to see whether we want to switch to a different auditor or or not. I mean, I think many people have wanted to have that discussion, and I think, you know. This coming round is is a good time to have it, so I just want to, you know, not let it get so late that we don't have other good options again.
Get noted.
Great, thanks. Mike?
Question, uh you said it was, I'm not on the audit committee. Uh did the audit committee or were they just pressed for time, uh I mean, pressed for switching to that point? What was the decisionary factor?
I mean, this this was on the agenda, the letter was presented, we didn't make any formal decisions. Um but my, but part of the reason that, at least, you know, part of my reason for now saying, you know, we should just, you know, decide about this, is it was. What was it, January, February, everyone we met, but I don't, I don't, I don't really think there was enough time to engage different auditors. In time for for the audit, it just, you know, didn't seem practical, and there was kind of a, presumably, you know, three-year contract, so. And then we were still part of, so that that was a thing, but, you know, if you were asking formally what the audit committee did, you know, we. Looked at the letter and we didn't take any. Don't assume that. That's a dangerous, but but I, but I, I think there is a, but in I other. Does the full commission want to see this as a, I do not, or would you rather, you know, the, I, you know, to me, it feels more efficient to just send it to the full commission. But we could discuss at the audit committee first, if people prefer that. You mean, you mean discussing as to who we're gonna contract as? Yeah, just the issue, you know, do we? Yeah, I I I think, I mean, it's it's been, you know, there were some errors in the audit, I I know, I I should probably shut up and let Bill talk at this point. Because I I know he's got opinions about this, um but I I I think, you know, Bill and others have opinions about this, you know, we should. We should discuss it, you know, we should discuss it in a context where we can actually make a decision. Could swear that way, which hasn't happened.
No, I agree, I agree, yeah.
Did you have something else to say, Bill?
Yeah, I mean, we can do it an hour after the motion. I mean, I agree that I, I personally think it should come before the full commission. For the record, before we make a decision. Um you know, it's no reflection of John Hatterley personally or Larson's, but I think it would be, would be negligent. Considering the vast amount of mistakes that were made to have continued on. I think we have an obligation to the citizens to make sure that these things don't happen in the future, so I'm. Certainly in favor of bringing it before the commission for the the next year, I'm I'm in favor of continuing.
Okay. Noted, yeah, definitely. I I think kind of for the whole commissions. Yeah, I I I agree with Bill, you know, we should think about this and it should become the full commission. I I guess I'd want to see what the alternatives are before saying we're not going with these folks, you know, the alternatives might be worse, I don't know, but. But 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 it's a discussion we should have.
Yes, it it is, it is.
Now, the city uses a different firm, they're out there, so I mean, it's, it's, as Gabe said, we just forgot to put it back out.
Yep. Um alright, uh anyone else or anyone care to make a motion on this? I don't think one's been made yet. I'll I'll make one. I I move to approve the chair's signature on the engagement letter with Larson Certified Public Accountants for. Audit of twenty twenty three financials. Thanks, Kevin. Alright, motion uh from Kevin and second from Mary. Any further discussion before I call for a vote? Alright, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands.
All opposed. Did, did you raise your hand, Evan? I'm sorry.
Uh, I was with the majority.
Okay. Uh, okay, the motion passes five to two with Commissioners, uh, Winfield and McCurdy, uh, in opposition. Hope the discussion has passed. Uh, I didn't, I didn't realize you still, sure, sure.
I, I understand the vote. I, I, I'm asking in the sense of how soon we're gonna be looking at? I mean, it'd be coming before the commission, uh, instead of the, uh,
Yeah, I was thinking about that actually in terms of like, um, especially if, especially if we want to sort of make sure to cast the widest net possible and have time to make a quality decision, um, especially before we get into what might, you know, what inevitably becomes a hectic budget season. Um, thinking about why that, why we wouldn't, uh, wait to do that, you know, within the next couple of months or, you know, really, or get that process going tomorrow, in other words. Yeah. Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Uh, all right, thanks. On to agenda item eleven, Ensign Resources presentation request, and this one is, uh, Commissioner Hadeen's.
Yeah, I just put this letter together. Um, as you know, I went up to Green River to a, a meeting at the city of Green River after there, they had a well incident. And, and what Ensign said was, and, and, you know, I believe them. They said that they had already slated that town meeting to describe what they were doing. They did just have that incident, so then the, the meeting, the town meeting was days later. The well incident was on a Friday and that meeting was on the next Wednesday, I believe. So, one of the things that you'll note in the email that we received, which I would assume was not a, anyways, it could ju, could just have been a coincidence, was that, um, it, I thought it would behoove us to reach out to Ensign and have him come to the county commission to do just a presentation. If it's a fifteen-minute presentation, just talking about what they are, have already done in the county and what they're proposing to possibly do. As you note in the, in the letter, they have quite an extensive network within Emory County and they built that network and I think it would be great to just have them start working with us. Um, you know, one of my jobs is I'm a, I'm a professor of natural resources, human dimensions within resource management. And basically they state, you know, to kind of mitigate any kind of conflict that you'll see within resource management, you just want to engage stakeholders early on. And so I think it would behoove us to just have them come and talk to us. And that's all this letter is stating. Like, hey, would you come? So, yes.
So, um, just on paragraph three, I, I would maybe, maybe work with it just a tiny bit, because it just says that we're gonna put that on the agenda. Make sure that third paragraph, fourth paragraph, and just put maybe, uh, that they give a fifteen-minute presentation. It says that they were requested to be placed on the agenda. So I think that maybe perhaps it's like, what case?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Because we, we can put them on the agenda whether they, whether they give a presentation. So that's the ones that
Great, thanks, Steve. Bill?
Yeah, right. Spent a little bit of time doing some research on this. Um, you know, the Biden administration has put out a really what they want to see moving forward from a national commitment, not just Grand County, but the entire nation on this lithium. And we need to remember lithium is not oil and gas. And I know that a lot of people were worried with what happened at the drill rig site out there next to the Green River. But I spent years working on those drill rigs and they're just called burbs. It's all it is, a burb, and they contained it and they moved on and they continued their process there. So to, to blow it out of proportion, we want to be careful with that. When the Biden administration is pushing this with some kind of national commitment, we've got wind in San Juan County. We've got solar to the north and the west of us, and what does Grand County have? As far as renewable energy, what we have is nothing so far. So to, I agree with Trish that we need to invite them in here, but not invite them in here to drill them, but invite them in here to make sure that what they are doing is in the proper area. It's sustainable. It's an environmental, we, we don't want lithium at the driveway to Arches National Park. Now, we all know that, but still Grand County should be doing their part to meet this national commitment that the Biden administration is pushing. Lithium is one way to do that. It's just one. So I, I would just say that we do need to invite them in here and have them in and see what we can do that works out for everybody so that we're not antagonizing or demonizing them for what they're trying.
Thanks, Bill. Uh, Mike and then Trish. So reading through, uh, sorry to interrupt you. Uh, and reading through, uh, they, uh, they just have property. We have no wells or anything.
Okay, sorry, um, they do have some wells, so let me get that really quick. I think this is just a blip that I pulled off the internet. Ensign Resources, it's been pursuing lithium resources and subservice bribes within a large block of claims near Moab and Grand County since two thousand eighteen. They have re-entered some old gas and oil wells to look at those bribe rates. So I know that they have quite a few claims out in the Yellow Cat area, out in the big flat area. So that's why, yeah, so that's why I think it would be great for them to come. And Bill, I do want to state that I one hundred percent agree with your statement. Um, I know, I know, right?
Back over here.
I did agree with your statement. I, that's why I think it would be great for them to come, for them to reflect where, where they have claims, what wells they have, that they're testing, et cetera, and so on. Yeah.
Thanks, okay. Uh, Mary, it was next.
Mine was just a quick statement that I didn't find, I found the letter I didn't find indicating at all that we were to drill them or, uh, in any way discouraging. We just wanted information. That's how I read them.
But I didn't want it to be contentious. I wanted to, to, to invite them.
Yes.
Uh, I was just gonna say that in the past, our ultra liaison used to also fill us in on like some of the operations that were happening around Harley Dome, with like helium extraction and stuff. And we used to get quarterly or annual, yeah.
Mine's gotta be a first, even now. Understood that when you started the on-fighting to, to
It was nice because
because it was changed during COVID and really country, you know, because they couldn't go on-site in any of these places.
Yeah.
So we need to reopen it.
Yeah, I, I know that a lot of that stuff out in Harley Dome has kind of slowed down, but I think with some of the new, I forget what you call that plant, um, you know, by the Colorado border on seventy, there's just kind of like a lot of questions about what's going on out there. And it's kind of nice to have a liaison that can
Do that, yeah.
Talk, talk with all the different bodies and then just kind of come in and give us a quick synopsis, like, so.
So, uh,
That, yeah.
And I, and I will state that, uh, it, it would be good when they do come to talk about the Danish Flats, uh, oh my gosh, the, where we put the wastewater, because that was one of the questions that came out of that. There, they took that wastewater and took it to Danish Flats and the questions were like, well, are they, are they permitted to do that? So I think there are all these great questions that citizens have had.
Because Russ always did that. Russ, and she, uh, the, the newest liaison came on twenty twenty-one or twenty, and things had to change for a while, but needs to go back.
So do you guys want to need to change that or do we just make a motion to change it? I mean, are you guys?
Yeah, I was just thinking of just, if you shifted that one paragraph to make, it just, the organization would kind of
You just want it down to the fifth paragraph?
Third paragraph to be the, fourth paragraph just transposed out and then maybe ask their scheduling.
Right.
I mean, like I said, we can put them on the agenda any time, but we started the conversation, we invited them to come, there are dates. But, you know, whatever calendar dates we have, maybe that moves here. And then they could appear virtually or person as, as much information to make it easy for them to come participate. I think that's, if that's the goal, then that's
The individual that wrote us is from, is from, uh, Orangeville, so, you know, yeah.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I guess the reason that I, I mentioned to not be controversial with them and to invite them over here was the planning commission meeting. There were a lot of comments, maybe one, positive about this situation. So and, and that's why I said, let, let's open this up and have some open dialogue. It shouldn't be about negative. And then back to the Harley Dome thing, Mary, and the the tank farm that's being built out there in the planning commission as well, um, it's Tony Mancuso, I believe, said that that tank farm is to handle all of this water from these wells. Well, he, he misspoke because the water farm or whatever you want to call it, where they handle all of that injection water is further towards Oak Cliff. It's about, I don't know, maybe four or five miles off of the freeway. And that's where that water processing plant is. The actual tank farm that's being built, I've been working on for some time with the centrally assessed committee and also with, um, Debbie Swayze, and that is a tank farm that they're bringing in gas and diesel, different products also for aviation to be then distributed across the entire western slope. So eventually when that's tank farm is done, our local gas stations will be being supplied from there rather than up, I believe it's clear up by mountain, that's where they come from now. Most of the fuel for this area. And so I'm not saying it's going to reduce the price of fuel there. I think that when you go to Green River and get cheaper fuel, that is going to help us deliver from there. But that is what that tank farm was about. So it's, it's part of the centrally assessed and part of personal property, because some of that stuff will sit on-site out there. It is a revenue source for this county.
Okay.
Part of the process we're working on.
All right, um, thank you. Uh, would someone like to make a motion on the agenda item?
But the changes suggested by our county attorney.
Second. All right, uh, question from Mary to approve, second from Evan. Any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. Awesome. All right, we are on to our consent agenda. And consent agenda today consists of bills at, uh, approval meeting minutes for both March nineteenth and the April second, uh, twenty twenty-four meetings. Uh, ratification of payment of county bills, total bills in the amount of one million, one hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Total payroll in the amount of, uh, four hundred seven dollar, or four hundred and seven thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-three cents for a total bills and payroll in the amount of, uh, one million, five hundred ninety thousand and nine dollars and fifty-one cents. Uh, also on the consent agenda, item C, teen center shared office space agreement with a free health clinic in Grand County. Item D, volunteer plan to the historic preservation commission. Uh, item E, extension to the GCAT slash USFS cost share agreement. Agenda item F, ratification of letter, uh, of support to Bureau of Land Management for completion efforts of Highway one twenty-eight paved multi-use pathway. And, uh, that is the entirety of the consent agenda. Thank you, Mary. And second from Mike. All right. Um, motion to approve consent agenda from Commissioner McGann, second from Commissioner McCurdy, all in favor of approving the consent agenda. Raise your hands. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, we are now on to our, uh, discussion items and, uh, discussion item thirteen, Thompson Springs Service District Funding Assistance. I'm leading this one along with, uh, JR, uh, John Corkery from, he is the chair of the TSSD. He's been uh, waiting patiently on Zoom, so we can admit to him. But I'll start the discussion out by saying that this is a result of, um, uh, we discussion, when Thompson had asked us to, uh, sponsor their CIB request. Um, was it CIB or was it the other one? It was the, uh, the Community Impact, actually. It's the Community Impact Grant. Uh, and we had, we ended up only sponsoring the fire department's request because it was thought that that would lend more credence to that. But I think many commissioners here expressed a desire to, um, yeah, find, find something to help Thompson out with their, um, efforts at, at locating additional water sources. They're wholly dependent on one spring right now. Uh, um, and the TSSD has been working diligently, especially, uh, the chair, JR, uh, working on finding alternative ways to, to procure water over there. Uh, all those ways require certain amounts of funding and Thompson was, um, able to procure a nice CIB grant for metering as well as other equipment. I think, I think it was specified that equipment, uh, was part of that grant request and they were a, or they I think are going to purchase a, uh, a device that will help locate a, a favorable place to put a well, um, and they, they have another grant um, to help out with that. But, but, um, the TSSD is, uh, asking us to discuss potentially finding, I think, uh, we added this stuff late in the pack, but I think it was around ten to fifteen thousand dollars to help them with the actual, uh, location of a spot to drill. And, uh, I'll open up the discussion and John from TSSD is available to answer questions if anyone has some questions as well. Anybody want to, uh, start off? Did, did you mention a dollar amount? I mean, my recollection it's just under two thousand. Okay. Go ahead, John.
Hey there, thanks, guys. Yeah, uh, the, the, so we, we, we asked, uh, an engineering firm, Jones and DeMille Engineering, uh, for a quote on a hydrology study to do, um, a hydrology study for, uh, the area and in specific three, uh, locations. Um, one is at the old spring site that the TSSC used to use. Um, and that's where we were applying with the BLM to do another spring site. Uh, we've been fortunate in that the private property owner that owns the property right next to that spring is willing to let us drill a well there. So um, it's a nice wet area and, uh, other folks have said that that would be a good spot to drill a well. So, yeah, we're asking you guys today for a hydrology study from, uh, the Jones and DeMille Engineering, uh, firm, and they're asking, uh, nine thousand, seven hundred dollars to do up to four sites um, with that hydrology study.
Okay, so if we, we, so for that amount of money, they would, they would investigate four sites that we may be able to kind of pre-qualify with, with the, uh, with the device that we are planning on purchasing um, with some of the CIB money, correct, Chair?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Uh, and sorry, the wording is in this, they're gonna kind of check the first site and if it's a go, they're gonna stop there? Or they're gonna check all four sites and pick the best one?
Well, uh, so if we spend the full ninety-seven hundred, then, um, we would get kind of a general hydrology study of the area with their, they would obviously look at our preferred site. And the reason why that's a preferred site is it's already, it's right next to the old spring site, obviously. Um, but it's also right on the water line, um, the current TSSD water line. So it wouldn't take very much to just hook into that line as opposed to if we drill the well in the other canyon, for instance, we'd have to put in a, a water line, you know, maybe like a half mile or, or a mile long, um, just at expense. Or if we were to do a well somewhere else in the area, we'd have to do a water line as well. So that's kind of the easiest area. So, yeah, the preferred site would be first and then, but with, with all this work that we've been doing and, and looking to get more water in Thompson, I think it would be a huge benefit to have a general hydrology study of the area up there so that we would have, um, solid information on how to move forward the best with drilling a well. Um, and let's see, they, um, because we do have the, the rights with the Division of Water Rights right now to drill two wells up uh, north of Thompson Springs in the canyons up there. And so yeah, I think doing the full study would be a, a huge benefit to not just Thompson Springs, but the county in general.
And the, uh, private property owner is, uh, willing to, to share that share that access or is that like a rental thing or is it TBD or?
So we had a do you want to go ahead, Jock, or?
Oh, yeah, please, John. Yeah.
Okay, um, so we, we had a, a few discussions with the private property owner and, um, he is just asking to be able to have free loadout water. Um, and then he does want to make sure that if we do deplete that spring, that we are, that we would use the well to put out some water into that area so that that area doesn't just go completely dry. Um, but, uh, there was no mention of like a monthly payment or any sort of fee to utilize that land. He just wants to have, uh, free wa-, loadout water, like I said, which he already has water rights and so it kind of makes sense to just give that to him anyways. So he's, he's really working with us on that.
JR, so does, are, are you guys gonna get easement or a profit prenup or anything like that from, from the landowner? What, what stops him from just taking away your ability to access this well once it's, once it's installed?
Uh, yeah, we would put together a land use contract, um, for the use in order to be able to, you know, put a well on his property. And yeah, we're gonna do that to the best of our ability, but then we're gonna take it to a lawyer, um, and, and a, a water rights lawyer, right? And, and put together something formal, uh, once we work out the, the nuts and bolts with him, then we'll put together something formal with the lawyer. Uh, that, you know, so it's ironclad as to what he can expect and what we can expect moving forward and to protect, protect our interests as well as his. So, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. One more question. Would just timing wise, I, I don't know if it matters to the commission. I don't know if the commission wants to see that agreement finalized before grant the money? Or is it something where that you wouldn't be able to get easement if you didn't have these funds already? I know it's, it's a chicken in anything. So I, just, just a question for you, JR, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, it, you know, I think that moving forward with a contract, um, we could certainly do that and, and get the nuts and bolts together. But as far as, as hiring a lawyer to do that, I don't think we want to spend the money until we know that, uh, his property is indeed where we want to drill. Um, there is another private property owner in Sago Canyon. Um, and if his property is deemed to be a much better location, we might want to go with that. Um, or, you know, in the case that the hydrology study suggests somewhere else that, you know. So I, I do think that we kind of need to spend the money before we really put the contract together, just because, yeah, we don't really know the exact location until we have the study.
Yeah. Just sneak one more in.
Yeah, absolutely.
So my, my concern is if you get the easement after, after you do a study, if you come out and do this study and realize that his property has a really good well system, his incentive or his value in his property is all of a sudden more to be worth more than if you have easement. So normally in oil and gas, you go out and get an agreement before you know the extent of the value of the property. So that's the only concern that you might go out and say, oh, look, you've got tons of wells that we can do. And then he might say, you know what? Actually, I don't want to share. Just pointing out devil's advocate. Trish?
I do like the idea of just a general hydrology study. Like I was just quickly looking at well logs in that area. I've always kind of been under the assumption that water is extremely hard to come by and that makes formation specific. That's why we put the tailings out there because it's not permeable. But it's that, I, I really like that idea of just doing that general hydrology study. Understanding all the well logs up against that escarpment, you know, pulling in that information, how deep are those wells? Is it even feasible to, before trying to move forward? That's my opinion. But because I, you know, I, I know there's ser-, some surface water and some springs, but
So, so, so you're saying, Trish, is we're gonna get value for money no matter what?
I think so. I mean, I, I, I definitely am, you know, in support of trying to do things logically out there. And to me, ten grand, and I would assume it's coming out of the commission discretionary fund.
That's a, well, that's another part of the discussion, but that is what we had discussed a little bit.
I mean, I, I'm in support of that. You know, I think that we, we do Thompson, and we've stated this before, we've done some little minor things for Thompson, but you know, they, they pay taxes and they don't get a lot in return. They don't get a lot of services.
Um, I mean, I, I agree that ten, you know, ten thousand dollars of water money, we shouldn't spend too much time discussing that. But I, I think Stephen makes, it could cost a lot more than ten thousand dollars if suddenly landowner, once they learn that they're sitting on top of those great waters says, well, I'll give you an easement for fifty thousand. If, if there's some possibility that happening, then it might make sense to wrap up the contract. Yeah, great. Did you hear that? Did you hear that, uh, JR?
I, I did, yeah. I mean, I, I feel that that property owner is, oh, I mean, whatever I say here is just gonna, I, I, yeah, I mean, it, he, he knows that we want to do it and he knows that there's water right there. I mean, it's literally bubbling out of the ground right next to him. And so and I, but I completely hear what you're saying. I just, my personal opinion is that, that that property owner is not gonna, you know, up the value of everything. Um, we're gonna be coming in and putting in a very expensive well. So, I mean, to him, it's a, it's a huge benefit. And he just seems like he's willing to help us out in general. So, um, and, and just so everybody knows, it's JK Allred, um, who's the private property owner up there. So, um, but, you know, however you guys want to do it, it, uh, you wanna, if you want us to push forward with the easement and contract first, um, we can certainly do that. Um, you know, I, I, I understand the need to protect.
As far as the con-, as far as the contract goes, JR, is it, is it, is the hangup, like the money, the, the TSSD, I know the TSSD doesn't have tons of money, but the, the TSSD has to spend legal for the contract?
Yeah, I, I don't know how much it would cost to put together that contract. Um, maybe it's only a couple hundred.
So maybe if the commission even, uh, helped out with that, that would probably be a prudent way to proceed.
Yeah, but I, that, that was where I was going. They, they already have it. They're turning dice use all the time. And yeah, uh, that's, I, if the commission, them using a small portion of money right at that agreement.
Make it even ten thousand.
There you go.
Um, okay. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
I was just gonna say this isn't an action item, but it's like there's a bunch of support for it. So I think if we kind of, um, move forward and then I was just gonna add, you know, if they took a stab at it of some kind of contract and didn't necessarily get like an official lawyer draft, you, you think the intent would hold up pretty well to?
I think really, well, they're just, they're just a general agreement that inserting this well on this person's property with, with good intentions and people are really nice and it always ends up, you know, famous last words. But yeah, if they had something in there that they'll give them access, really what they want to know is how much water that they're going to be entitled to. Some of those agreements and the ability to enter and to maintain. Yeah, it, it should be relatively straightforward document they can play. Yeah, but every lawyer's like, turn.
It kind of looks like the letter from Jones and DeMille is kind of saying, don't get too hopeful on this spot. So I think that, um, it's, eh, eh, that's kind of what my original question is like, are they gonna check the other spots too? Because there's gonna be, you know, yeah, we can make this work and it's close to the existing pipe and that's nice. But if they hit the jackpot, you know, in the other canyon.
Yeah.
I, I'd just like to check all for.
Yeah, and I think that, like, like Trish was saying, I think a more thorough, uh, hydrological report would, would benefit everybody. Just kind of how I'm, I'm playing with out there. It, it does practice for them to keep that information and thinking that themselves, simply that once that report gets out, it's not share. Yeah. Okay. So it does. So just to kind of wrap up this discussion, it does sound like there's, there's appetite on the commission to support Thompson on this. Um, and maybe we could have, I guess we'd have to have a future action item. And maybe thought of how that would work with the budget to get to discretion for good economy. And we can do this. Okay. Yeah, next, next week. All right. Uh, any other questions or comments on this discussion? Cool. Thanks.
Thanks for your work on it, JR.
Yeah, thanks, JR. And I know, all right. So our next discussion item is, is the replat. I know it doesn't have, it's not have to do with Thompson Springs, but you're welcome to hang out and listen to that discussion. Um, so I will, uh, turn it over to Commissioner Winfield for the next discussion. It's on Thompson Springs replat, plenty.
Great, thanks, Jess.
Yeah, I would like to, um, I think there's been emails going around already. So I think that we do need to set up and just have a meeting at some point with the body. We've got Bill Jackson involved for the road work. We've got our engineer involved. We have the surveyor involved. And we have Elise, Elisa involved at this point. And then I know you and I have discussed this show.
Yeah.
But the survey that he came up with met most of the concerns of the Keeney brothers, which were the biggest holdouts. And having them on board, and I've probably spoke to another six or seven that which are not holding out, that they're just ready. So I think that we're at a point, and Elise brought up that she started a letter already, and then she wants Lucas and Dan to look over it and make sure that it's correct. And John Cortez, he's another one that needs to be, be involved because it will have to be recorded. And so we're at the point they've started this letter. You know, the concerns that I have is, as Lucas mentioned and Elise alluded to it, is that we're gonna have to do a title report on every parcel in this amended replat that we're in the process of. And Lucas doesn't have that money in his budget. In fact, if I recall from our budget meetings, I think he's got a budget somewhere in the seventy thousand dollar range to cover all of his wages and everything for the year. So there's gonna be some money, again, that we're gonna have to help there. And then the other one is that we need to do a utilities locate, which will cost a little bit of money to make sure and pencil out where all the utilities are in the case that some of them end up on personal property. Now, if they're on the easements to run the borders of the property, I don't think it's an issue. But if they, if there's a with all this moving that they've done out there, Lucas wants to, um, have the utilities all located. Right. So there'll be a little bit of expense there, less than the title report. And honestly, I don't know what the title report, if I honestly we're somewhere in the twenty-five, like, different property range. So I, I don't know what the dollar amount per property that that title report will have to be done before we can record this with John Cortez as well.
Would that fall under P and T budget?
Under what?
The planning and zoning budget, seems like.
That's crazy. No, I would bet it's five hundred bucks. I was gonna say five hundred.
Okay.
But I honestly don't, I don't, it's just in my notes so that we discuss that I haven't brought this up.
Sure.
Money's coming from with Elise or anybody else. There is gonna need to be some money there. And then potentially if Lucas goes over his yearly budget, there's the potential there. Because eventually if we get everybody signed off, he's gonna have to go in and survey every, he's just done it on these paper right now. He's gonna have to go in and survey every property, set the corner markers. And he'll spend some, some substantial time out there once we get signatures and everybody's on board. So that everybody knows where, what their property boundary is in line. So, so there's, there's the potential to spend a little bit of money here to get this accomplished. And I don't think it's appropriate or something. Reach out to the homeowners and ask them for, but I'm open to discussions if somebody disagrees with that. But currently, because of the situation that they're in, many of them bring it up that John Gunther started this. And then it got put on shelves somewhere. And so they haven't been able to pull a building from it. They haven't been able to sell these property. They're, they're basically, some of them are living on other people's land. By the old plan, you know, A, A.J. Rogers' house is on the frame property by the old plan. So when you look at all of that as a county, I think there would be hoping that everybody's on, like, when it's another area, we can help them approximately twenty or twenty-five people to be able to, yeah, remodel their bathroom, if they want to, whatever. So, though, but then I guess my point is we're gonna have to spend some money.
Who do those, uh, fees go to for the per property?
It's a technical company.
Yeah, I just, I just said.
Can we try to negotiate like a?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, or we could.
There's two.
I heard that there's a third, no, it could be wrong.
Even better.
So, yes, that's true.
So save a little bit there. But, but Bill's point is still, we can show up with a little bit of money. Yeah, would, would it, would it make most sense to, uh, P and T?
The other thing is that Bill Jackson has said that in his budget, he would cover the road realignments because with the three adjustments that Lucas has done, there's a couple of places the roads end up on private property. And so to get them back onto Upper Dina County right away, he's willing to do that out of his budget. He and I have met out there. He's driven it. He's, he's not too concerned. And he's gonna change some of it a little bit, like a couple of the streets wide, go right or left in a big arc. He's gonna bring them to the stop sign and then an actual tee and kind of clean all that up. So and, and he's on board with helping whatever he can to get this thing through.
Do you think the, uh, utility locators could be part of the road project and under their budget?
Have to ask him about it.
Yeah.
I think the biggest, um, utility locator is gonna be Ryan Will anyway, who's city or county city, 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 what else would say, might be one of our employees.
He's, he's a TSSD employee as well, city's all that.
Okay. So, yeah, I think water is gonna be the biggest utility that they have to. And I, I'm not sure, I think, like, it's all overhead. So that's easy. Water. I don't believe so.
I don't know.
I don't think so.
I don't think, I, I think you're.
So, so it's, it's still minimal, but there is some expense there. It's trying to cover all our bases.
And, and are the title reports necessarily necessary to?
According to the at least they're necessary for the report now. I, I, I mean, it's out of mind.
I, I mean, it's kind of an unusual situation. So this is some general, we can give exception.
Owners want those and banks want those.
Then part of the title report also is gonna have the property description in it, which is gonna be new compared to the old plan. It's part of the legalities of that.
They can actually need them. I think it's good while we got some momentum to keep it going.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, absolutely. Even if we got these two waves in there. It's a lot of money, but it's
There was one other thing too that I was gonna look into, but last year, I believe it was when we had, um, Josh Green working here, they provided dumpsters out there. And with these property line adjustments, I know one property owner has already mentioned, hey, you're forcing all that garbage on a piece of property. They're happy that they're gonna have it. But there's still the potential of if we can come up with some dumpsters like we did in the past.
We, we did it three years ago and, and it was out of discretionary fund and it was like seven grand. We did it for a couple of days and we allowed the public to just come in down. Yeah, then there was that big fire. Mark, Mark was like, we gotta clean this. So yeah, that was kind of the big.
I think this would be more rather than let them have a free for all unless we have extra, to make sure that those property lines, that if you're inheriting somebody else's garbage, that they
Yeah, you can dispose them. Sure.
Maybe, yeah.
That's all I've got.
Okay, again, it, it seems like to me that we've got pretty. Talking about that, is that something that we would need to uh, come back to with the action? Yeah, it's great. Yeah.
Yeah.
Whoever, whoever our local OCA's are down, that will have a better idea. It might not be an issue or it might be a big issue. Right. Great, any further comments on that discussion?
That's all I've got.
Great, thank you, Bill. All right, we've come to the end of our agenda. We don't have any more care. Do you have something you want to say to you? Okay, great. Uh, I, it is, what time is it? It is eight oh nine and I will adjourn this regular Grand County Commission meeting uh, from April sixteenth. Thank you.